One of you is running the meeting this morning, but if you could do the roll call, please.
Sure, Suzanne.
Okay, thank you Suzanne.
Sure, good morning. Mohammed Jobe.
Good morning, here.
Gray Farren.
Here.
Kim Gleason.
Good morning, here.
Tammy Colby.
Good morning, everyone.
Lyle Jepson.
Here.
Tom Lovett.
Here.
Jenna O'Farrell.
Here.
Rich Werner.
Here.
Aleah Wilburn.
Here.
Secretary Boucher. Jennifer Dex Samuelson.
Here, good morning, thank you. So I do have one amendment to the agenda. We are going to add in an executive session before Agenda Item E, which is our Rule Series 2000 Education Quality Standards Update, absent any objection. Okay, hearing none, are there any other amendments to the agenda? All right, with that, I will turn it to public to be heard. If there are any members of the public who wish to address the board, if you're on the Teams platform, you can press the raise hand icon, and if you're calling in, it is star five to raise your hand. Right, and, oh, I see James Pash, if I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Morning.
Good morning, everyone, how are you?
Good.
My name is James, and I am the Senior Director of National Litigation at the ADL. It's good to see some of you again. The ADL is a legal representative for Jewish Communities of Vermont, JCVT, and we have submitted written and oral testimony in the past concerning the EQS standards and Part B of the definition of ethnic groups being reinserted into the definition, as was legally required under Act One, and the Vermont Legislature passed Act One with a really noble aim of teaching students about marginalized groups and those harassed and discriminated against, and with this goal in mind, the legislator defined ethnic groups, and also as part of that definition included, quote, "groups that have been historically subjected to persecution or genocide." And the issue today, when I go over the draft that you are all considering, is it looks like the entire definition of ethnic groups has been removed from the EQS draft in front of you, and it's our position that that definition needs to be reinserted into the draft in order to remain legally compliant with Act One, including Part B of that definition. JCVT met with state legislators, the intent was to define ethnic groups in order to adequately teach ethnic studies, and we are asking that that definition be reinserted into the draft that's in front of all of you today. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to listening in and to also submitting follow-up written testimony to the State Board of Education. Thank you so much to everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like Ted Molnar, I think you have your hand up as well?
Yes, yes, I do. Can you hear me, folks?
Yes.
Hello? Thank you. Good morning, everyone, and first I want to thank the board here for all the hard work they've done on this issue, which is very critical to the state of Vermont, and especially to the Jewish folks who live in the state. I am 100% behind what James has said, and my background here is simply that I've been on this board for quite a while, fighting anti-Semitism and making sure that the Jewish citizens of the state are fully protected. And I just would like to reiterate once again that what James has said is the definition that we should be going by and not change anything. And if you folks can decide to do that, that'd be great. If not, we will need to go forward and handle this matter in a different way. Thank you for your time, and I'm finished with my comment.
Thank you very much. All right, any other members of the public who wish to address the board? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody. We will leave this agenda item open for several more minutes while we proceed on with the other things on our agenda. So, excuse me, at this point, I will entertain a motion to approve our meeting minutes from February 21st, 2024. Is there a motion?
So move.
All right, thank you, Lyle. Is there a second? Seconded by Tammy, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of approving our meeting minutes from February 21st, 2024, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying no. Any abstentions?
Yes, I'll abstain.
Okay, abstained by Tom because he was not at our meeting, the motion carries. Thank you. Still not seeing any members of the public who wish to address the board. So I will move on to board announcements. I know, Lyle, I think you indicated to me that you need to leave by 12:30 today, and Jenna needs to leave at 12:15.
I also need to leave at 12:45, which shouldn't be too much before we're done, but yeah, I definitely have to get out right then.
Okay, and frankly, we may end earlier than scheduled, just because my suspicion is that our discussion on Rule Series 2200 is not going to take the hour that we've allocated to it, so we may end early today, which would be good. So I have a couple of announcements. One is Tammy and I presented before the Senate Education Committee on March 1st. Yeah, we were invited to testify for five minutes, that was the advertisement. It ended up being more than five minutes. I did include the one slide that we had included with our presentation. So S304, which was the bill that we were invited to testify on, is the bill that pertains to career technical education centers. And you might recall that we had a legislative update by interim Secretary Boucher at our last meeting, as well as a presentation by Ruth Durkey on CTEs at our last meeting. The issue in S304 that kind of, Tammy's and my curiosity, was the proposed language shifts oversight of CTEs from the board to the agency, as well as rulemaking authority from the board to the agency, which is nothing that anyone had ever approached the board about to see if we had any thoughts about it. So it put us in a little bit of a tricky position, because the invitation to testify literally came two days after our last board meeting, and I didn't have the opportunity to have a full board discussion about those issues before Tammy and I presented. So it left us, you know, kind of with one arm tied behind our back, in a way. So I spoke with Heather about, you know, having a deeper conversation about this, because again, I think it really caught the board off guard. We weren't, we had no way to anticipate that that proposed language was going to be in the bill. Heather obviously is not able to be with us today, but I do know that we are, you know, planning to have a special meeting within the next couple of weeks with regard to voting out EQS. She did indicate that she would be able to be at that meeting and answer questions from the board. So I just wanted to kind of let everyone know that Tammy and I testified, but really what I'd like to do is have a deeper conversation and really solicit the board's opinion on the issue of both oversight and rulemaking with regard to CTEs, so that I can then go back, you know, Tammy and I, or whomever, go back to present the board's position. And I think, you know, at this point, the bill has made crossover, so any testimony would be before the House Education Committee. So want to stick a pin in that one, but also just let you guys know, and you can kind of be thinking about it, and we'll have a more robust conversation at a future date. I'll pause there, because, Kim, I think I saw your hand raised. Yes?
Yeah, Jennifer, I'm just wondering, as a matter of process, given that the, we had a CTE presentation at the last state board meeting, was Heather able to elaborate at all on this, their position? Because I think they were sort of forwarding the legislation, any reason why they would not have provided us that insight so that we could have had that conversation when we had CTE and the AOE with us?
I think that's a great question. I think that's a good question to, you know, hold in your back pocket until we have the conversation with Heather when we schedule that meeting.
So she wasn't able to offer any insight to that?
Well, I think it's probably a better question for her to answer.
I mean, I think we know, we know what we heard at the last board meeting, right? And to Jennifer's point, when we went in to testify, I think both of us went back on our heels a little bit, because the sort of the question and the line of questioning, and even the tone of questioning, was not at all what we expected. It's quite clear that there had been conversations about this that have been ongoing for quite a while, and so I think, to your point, Kim, it does beg the question why this wasn't brought up to us earlier. I think we, as always, would like to be good partners with the agency, and it would be great to have a conversation with them about this, so that we're all on the same page and not sort of have to do this in a testimonial back and forth, right? You know, we would, you know, throughout our work, especially on these rules for both EQS and 200 series, we've partnered quite closely with the agency, so, but I do think our interest here, and this is just me speaking, I do think that one of the concerns that I have is making sure that we don't start peeling off this rule and that rule and different, so different entities own different rules, especially when they relate to similar topics, right? It'll make it much more difficult to keep things in alignment, so, but I do look forward to having Secretary Bush come in and talk to us some more about this.
All right, any other comments before I move on with other announcements? Oh, Lyle, yes?
When might that conversation take place? Because it now is going over to, I've reached out to our Senator Weeks, who is on the Senate Education Committee, has now moved over to House Ed. It seems to be moving more rapidly than we are in our reaction to it. And my comments to Senator Weeks included the fact that we have not had opportunity for input, nor has the public really had opportunity for input on this, and I agree with Tammy that if we're going to start to just peel things away one at a time, maybe we need to have a broader conversation where this is headed. Particularly, as you might expect, I'm very concerned about career and tech ed, given my background in that. Career and tech ed has, tech ed has always felt like it did not always get the same attention from the Agency of Education or others that it might deserve, and so I worry that this is just the first peeling of the onion. I'm not sure why we're starting with CTE.
So, again, I think those-
We elevated, we elevated those concerns as well, as well as identified you as a resource to this process that we would hope for your leadership in the conversation on behalf of the state board. I think I would agree with you that it presents problems to sort of peel rules apart. There's also sort of this notion of expediency and needing to do something quick around the CT rules, and I recognize they haven't been open in a long time, but rules follow policy, right? There have been major policy shifts, and I appreciate that we're going to have some policy shifts, and we've had the new APA report come out. So now's the time to open the rule, but, you know, we have to sort of balance, as I'm sure you would agree, right? This notion of expediency with public input, right, and sort of having a thoughtful deliberative process about how we do this. And so, you know, the idea being that this would be something expedient that would be done by the agencies very quickly without perhaps sort of that kind of public input, I find troubling, and I think that, I mean, hearing the same thing from you and others in the field.
So-
And I would agree. I went on to suggest to Senator Weeks that the state board has a procedural track record right now for rulemaking that's effective and inclusive of public comment, and that's exactly what our role should be, that we want to make sure people are aware of what's happening in their schools.
So, Lyle, I hope you will reiterate all of those comments when we have our conversation with Heather, and to your question, I mean, I'm just forecasting here that within the next, you know, couple of weeks, we are going to have a special meeting of the full board in order to vote out EQS. You know, that, that meeting has not been set yet, but I think, you know, probably within, you know, two, maybe three weeks, but in that timeframe. When I spoke with Heather, you know, after Tammy and I appeared before Senate Ed, she said that she would make herself available for that meeting, so it would be, you know, kind of a two agenda item meeting for our special meeting. And I think, you know, that timeframe will work quite well, you know, once the bill has now made crossover and it's going before House Ed, that we would be able to get there, you know, kind of on the earlier end of things with their deliberations. So, and House Ed is aware, and, you know, they are expecting that we will go in and testify, so it's just going to be a coordination of us being able to have this meeting and come to some sort of consensus, and then being able to go before House Ed with, you know, whatever the board agrees and what comes out of that conversation.
All right, thank you.
I see, Kim, your hand is still raised, but I think Mohammed's is as well, so Mohammed, I'll go with you first, just because you haven't spoken yet.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, and all that has been said really resonates with me. I hear we say the public has not been informed much, not that we know of. I also just want to remind us, unless you consider students being a part of the public, how much input have students got around this? We serve students, and sometimes decisions are being made without them being involved or hearing anything until it's done. I don't think that is fair to the students we actually serve. Just wanted to add that part.
Thank you. Kim?
Thanks, that's one who I think has served on every rule committee since I've been appointed to this board. The process takes time, but it has been very inclusive, and DQS ended up being the rulemaking authority of the AOE, and that process, I think Tammy and I as co-chairs of EQS were the only comments submitted, and that response to that comment had very little effect on the document, and as a matter of practice, the AOE not being a publicly appointed board, our conversation was not a public, a warned public meeting, and I think regulation is, has the effect of law when, when passed, and I think the process should be in public meetings.
Okay, good thoughts. Mohammed, Kim, you know, Lyle, Tammy, I hope we will all sort of remember these comments and bring them to our conversation with Heather, so, and I think, you know, at this point, it's not, we're not having the discussion. I'm just kind of forecasting that we are going to have the discussion, but I think these are all really good points that are being made. So if I don't hear anything further, I'm going to move on to my next announcement, which is, I did have a conversation with Sandra Cameron and Claire Wool from the Vermont School Boards Association last week. They had reached out to me to discuss this resolution that the VSBA passed at its annual meeting last fall, and I spoke with them about it. I've asked Maureen and Suzanne to include the, you know, clarifying email that was sent to me after our phone call, as well as the underlying resolution itself, and you can kind of see the procedural history with it. I think there will be more conversations with the VSBA, but what was interesting to me is when I read the resolution as passed by the VSBA, and I think, you know, the board will remember that we had a brief discussion about it a few months ago, and Sue Saglowski was on the meeting, but was not able to answer and had a follow-up email sort of discussing the procedure. So my question was, why? You know, like, what led the VSBA to pass a resolution that mentioned failures of the state board of ed? And I was really trying to reconcile that with, you know, a very friendly outreach from the VSBA and a very friendly phone call indicating, you know, their desire to partner with the board, and I said, okay, you know, like, that sounds very positive. I like that idea. We would love to partner with the VSBA, but I'm just trying to understand failures, and, you know, one thing that they did acknowledge is that, that was probably a poor choice of words, that, you know, if they could go back in time, they would have come up with a different word, which was helpful to hear. And I did ask them for the language of the resolution itself, which I did forward to you all last night, and it will be included in the minutes. But as I look at the underlying language of the resolution, I don't really see anything in there that pertains to the state board of ed. So what we then continued our discussion was really, you know, they're hoping to demystify the work of the state board of ed and, you know, help people to understand what we do, what we don't do, and really kind of promote that understanding with the general public, which I think would be terrific. So that's kind of where the conversation ended, and I'm sure, you know, they've put together a commission that I think is going to be working through most of this year. So I'm sure there will be further conversations. They're kind of just getting started and getting themselves organized, so I'm sure there will be follow-up conversations and outreach, but just wanted to let you guys know. And then my final announcement, oh, yes, Kim?
I was just going to ask, Jennifer, like, that commission doesn't, as I read it, necessarily include any liaison or member from the state board, and I didn't know to what extent that is either of interest or appropriate, or, you know, not exactly. It does feel as though at some point there should be an opportunity to engage with it to actually, from the perspective of those doing the work, is sort of the role and what we do. I read it a little differently in tone than what you're describing, and I understand that they maybe, there's been frustration with the lack of leadership at the state level in education, and I, I know that the field has felt that. We've heard it from many angles, and I think that that feels as though we should be in a position to be doing more from a leadership angle as the state board of ed, and I, you know, exercising our full authority to do all the things that we're expected to do, not just establish regulations. So I guess I'm just, I, I think that would be an interesting follow-up to see if they would benefit from a liaison from the board, you know, what would they like for us? How would they like for us to contribute to the process?
So we did talk about that a little bit, and they don't really, I mean, they don't know, because they're still getting themselves organized. It is clear that there will be further, you know, conversations, and at least for now, those, you know, questions or, you know, whatever will be directed to me in my capacity as chair, and it may be that, you know, depending on, you know, what that looks like, it may get delegated out, but, yeah. I, I mean, I for one feel like it's, I would much rather be on the same side of, you know, pick an issue. I'd like to collaborate with our educational partners, and so I did find the tone of that conversation very encouraging. Okay, so my last update is just an FYI. Sarah and I are meeting on Friday this week with Big Hartman, who is the new Executive Director and Legal Counsel for the Human Rights Commission, just as an opportunity to, I for one have never met Big. Big took over the position from Boer Yang, who stepped down a year or so ago. So I've never met Big before, thought this would be a good opportunity to, you know, have a conversation with them, and also just kind of be there in case there were any questions about, you know, EQS 2200, and just, again, make sure that we're all on the same page, so that will be on Friday. Any other board announcements? All right, I'm not seeing, oh. Jenna, were you up?
I'm raising my real hand. Fun to maybe end the announcements on something really, really great and wonderful. I was at the Capitol in Washington last week, and in the basement of the Capitol was the Congressional High School Art Show, and there's an amazing piece of work, mixed media from a student in Montpelier. Their name is Shaqy Agopian, and it's a beautiful, beautiful work of art, and they were nominated by Congresswoman Ballant, and the painting is there for, I think, at least 18 months, and there's exceptional artwork from high schoolers from all over the United States. Vermont has one entry, and it's fantastic. So if you're in Washington and can get into the Capitol and somehow can get into the basement, which is through amazing tunnel system, check out this amazing artwork by a Vermont high school student.
Thank you.
Great.
All right, any other board announcements? Hearing none, I'm going to circle back one last time for public comment. If there are any members of the public who wish to address the board. And I'm not seeing anybody. So with that, I will turn it over to Aleah and Gray for the student report.
Would you like to go, Gray? Oh, Gray, or would you want me to go?
You can start.
Sorry, I just dropped something. It's not going well. I'm sorry, what'd you say?
You can start.
Okay, let me get my camera on. My, it's not really working out for me right now. Okay. Is it on? Okay, it's on. Um, so at school, right now, we have testing tomorrow. Nine, freshmen through juniors, so I don't have to do testing, so that's great. We just had a chorus concert, which went, oh, well, we had a concert, which is chorus, and all the band kids, and that was nice. It went really well. What else has been going on? I mean, basketball just ended. We came in second. We lost the state championship game, so that was, you know, that was kind of sad, but on to the next season. And we are trying to get a teen center in Newport. So we have some student, students that are part of that process, and I am one of the students. On Monday, we just went to go see a space that we could potentially get, and I think it's a go for us. So we'll sign off on that contract, and we'll start getting everything set up for it, so that's pretty exciting. I think that's really about it, about what's going on. Our principal is in our classroom. He teaches the class. I'm in his class, and it's going, it's going pretty well. We talk about education in Vermont, and so that gives me a chance to talk about the board, which was pretty cool. Yeah, I think that's pretty much all that's going on now. The new season is starting for sports, so, yeah.
I was going to ask about the basketball championship. I'm sorry that you guys lost. That must have been a hard loss, particularly with you as a senior.
Yeah, I mean, I think it was a hard loss, but I think that because I know I have another season, like, because I'll be playing in college, that it wasn't, it didn't hit as hard as I think it would have if I didn't. But yeah, we lost by five. We had them, yeah, we, I think we were up by, to like 15 at half, and then we just lost the lead. So, yeah.
Um, and are there any updates with VSAR? And like, have you been going to schools to do the presentations? That, I know when you all gave the, you and Addie gave the presentation in the fall, you were talking about being invited into schools, and I'm just curious to know if you guys have been doing that, and if so, how that's been going.
Yeah, so I personally have not been able to be as involved as I usually am, just because a basketball season came into like playoffs, and it just, but VSAR is going to schools. We're actually supposed to present at CVU next Wednesday. So we are going to schools, we are presenting, kind of doing everything that was, that we talked about, and, and then some. So it's going really well with VSAR, and I think if it's okay, we would like to present at the next meeting. Yeah?
That's great.
Okay, yeah, um, so, yeah, we'll have more information then. Okay, yeah. Um, so, yeah, we'll have more information then.
All right. Thanks, um, Kim.
Thanks, Aleah. I am wondering if you could just talk a little bit more about the teen center, and is that partnering, partnering with the schools? Or is there a separate organization that, um, you all are partnering with?
Yeah, so, um, it's kind of like an entire community thing, like everyone in the community is pitching in and trying to help out. So we are a partner with our school just because they have to have students to go to these meetings and to get our input on it. We are also partnered with the police department, um, local, like, stores within our community. My heater's going off, sorry. Um, yeah, I, I think that it's, it's a community project, um, and it's actually very heartwarming to see that everyone wants this for the teens, because we have nothing to do in our town.
Sounds amazing. Thank you.
Any other questions for Aleah before we turn it to Gray? All right, Gray, the floor is yours.
One of the biggest things that's happened at Virginia's recently is our musical was just last week, and that was Mama Mia, which I was part of, and those are the last three days of last week, so I'm sorry if I haven't been responding to emails or anything, or wasn't around much last week, because they keep us every night until like eleven. So, very busy, but my schedule is finally clearing up a bit. And besides that, and as far as activities, it's kind of a downtime. You know, the new season of sports is starting, but only in the very earliest stages of like preseason stuff. Uh, most of the stuff being talked about the school right now is actually about the school board and the budget, even on the student level. So you know it's bad when the students are also talking a lot about the budget. Because I've never had people ask me anything about the school board. I'm a school board representative. Never had people ask me about it that are students until this past week, and it's been like, everyone's asked me about it. Because lots of budgets failed across Vermont. Uh, there were a lot of complications with the budget this year, not just for Virginia's. We were one of the schools that our budget did not pass, unfortunately. And we are now on like our third version of a budget that we're putting forward, because we put forward an original budget, and then we changed our budget after, uh, an infamous letter from the Ways and Means Committee. And so we had an emergency meeting to change our budget, and that's the budget we put out to the public after we cut seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from it. And that one still didn't pass, so we just had an emergency meeting yesterday, or two days ago, because today's Wednesday. Now look at the budget again, and two, two things have come up that are pretty controversial, at least with the students and with the larger community. One, and this doesn't actually relate to the budget, but it gets associated with it, and I unfortunately think it's one of the reasons it was voted down. It's that we're renovating our bathrooms in the main high school and middle school hallways towards a universal bathroom design, where they're all, it's gender neutral, and they're all individual stalls and kind of facing the hallway. It's a hard thing to describe without pictures, but basically, you know, the sink and all that is just kind of a common area that's open to the hall, and then it's, you know, individual stalls, which lots of people aren't happy about, and there's going to be only really like six stalls for the high school hallway, which lots of people think is going to be really tough. Well, there's lots of debate about whether or not that will be successful, but either way, it's a, that's a hot topic at the school right now, so I thought I'd bring it up. And then the other thing is, at Virginia's, for the past like twenty-five years, we've had what's called the Walden Project, um, which is an alternative learning program for a few students that you can always sign up to, and rather than going to school besides like one mass class at the beginning of the day, you go to the Walden Project, which is a plot of land in the woods, and it's run by a director, and it's very humanities focused. It's very, hence the name, you know, based on teachings of like Thoreau and stuff. And, uh, that's been going for a really long time, and even if it's not for a large amount of students, it's been important to people, and it's gained a lot of recognition on a Vermont level and a national level because of how good it is as an alternative logo, uh, learning program. And that was one of the things we cut from our more recent budget, mostly because the longtime director, who's been the director the entire time, and it's that type of project that one person is really spearheaded all the way through, um, is leaving anyways. So because of that, the school board chose to cut the Walden Project, but that's obviously a huge point of concern for students and the community in general. And the meeting Monday was kind of crazy. We had lots of people come and speak, some people cried, and it was a seven to five vote for that budget to go through. So the, the public still hasn't voted on that budget, but if they voted it down, it would just be to cut more stuff, not to bring the Walden Project back. So that's been the, the thing everyone's talking about at our school, unfortunately, because of that.
That is a really hard, um, I mean, I, I'm, I'm in one of the districts where we actually did pass our budget, but, um, I, we spent a lot of time, you know, sort of looking what was going on around the state, and there are some really, really hard choices being made, um, that, you know, there's just no two ways around it, so that's really hard. When are you next up for a vote on your current budget?
Um, the community? Uh, I'm not exactly sure when the date is. It's pretty soon, because we wanna, which is also a point of controversy, because now that it's failed and we have to revote, where, you know, it's a quick turnaround, which most people aren't happy about, but it has to be a kind of quick turnaround, especially since we're cutting stuff, because anyone who we need to cut, that's a faculty member, has to have note, you know, notification, and the more the better. So we're worried if this budget also fails, which we really hope it doesn't, and don't know why it would, because at this point, there's not much more we can cut that would actually make a difference on anyone's tax dollars. But, uh, you, you know, it just needs to become a quicker and quicker turnaround, so everyone's also kind of scared of that possibility. I don't know when the exact date is, though. I cannot tell you.
Okay. Well, good luck. Any comments or questions for Gray? All right. Well, thank you both. Um, appreciate the updates, and it's, it's good to know what's going on, you know, in school, but also outside of school, um, and really appreciate, um, your perspectives. So this brings us to the item on our agenda that we just added, which is the executive session. Um, oh, and I need to pull up that language. Give me a second. Okay, so at this point, I'm going to move pursuant to one V S A, section three thirteen A one, that the board finds the premature general public knowledge of confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the State Board of Education would clearly place the board at a substantial disadvantage. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tom. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries. Um, I further move that, um, the board enter executive session to receive confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the board pursuant to one V S A, section three thirteen A one, capital F. Is there a second?
Second.
Hi, Mohammed.
Okay, well, seconded by Mohammed. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries. Um, so at this point, we're going to leave this meeting. You guys have all received the link to our executive session, so after clicking out of this, um, I will see you all in the executive session. Thanks. All right, so I think at this point, we're gonna go ahead and resume. Um, this takes us to, um, our rule series two thousand, education quality standards update. Um, and so Tammy and Kim, I will turn it over to the two of you.
Thank you, and I wonder, is Sarah back in with us? I was going to ask her to screen share the presentation. And Tammy, I don't know if you want to.
I have the presentation, if you want me to screen share.
Sure.
And Sarah is here.
Awesome. I just know that my
Sarah, you're on.
My technical expertise on screen sharing and trying to get through the presentation.
I can't make this any quieter.
I can, sure.
Thanks, Tammy.
Do you want to share? Undo it.
Go ahead, Sarah. Go ahead. Go ahead. You're on it.
Tammy, do you want to start, and I'll finish up, or shall I start and you finish up?
I can start. Um, I, I want to zoom out a moment, though, first, and just sort of, first of all, remind everybody about why what we're doing is so important. Right? Like, these rules are the fundamental rules that guide how we do education in the state of Vermont, and there's been a lot of work, as Kim has pointed out, and we've talked about it over the past, you know, year and a half, around updating these rules for Act One. But there are a lot of other updates in here that really, we think improve the rule, and in the end, I think, you know, sometimes we all get bogged down in the trees, but standing back and reminding ourselves about the forest. You know, I think our committee is really proud of the work that we've done and to bring these rules to the board, because what you're going to see before you is, what we view is, I think wisely will be viewed around the country as one of the strongest set of public education curriculum and rules, particularly with respect to protecting students against discrimination, and also in terms of ensuring that students have access to an equitable education. And so that's really an accomplishment, right, for all of us, and it certainly started with the good work by the legislature in Act One. So with all of that as a backdrop, I just want to sort of take a second to go back through where we've been. I don't want to spend a lot of time, but the original, our changes, um, to the rule were initiated by Act One, and Act One had these six things that we were asked to do in the rules. In terms of increasing cultural competency for students in grades P K twelve, increasing attention to the history, contribution, and perspectives of ethnic and social groups, promoting critical thinking regarding the history contributions and perspectives of ethnic and social groups, committing schools to eradicating racial bias in their curricula, providing across the curricular content and methods that enable students to safely explore questions of identity, race, equality, and racism, and ensuring that our basic curriculum and extracurricular programs are welcoming to all students and account for parental concerns about religion and culture. And again, just as I mentioned in, I guess, my preamble there, these are really ambitious goals, and they're unique goals, because no other state has done the hard work of making sure that their regulations provide this level of protections and opportunities for students in public education. So the process that we've been through so far, if you want to flip down the slide, Clem, is in May twenty twenty-three, we voted unanimously to adopt Rule Two Thousand. That was, um, revised rule per the work the E Q S Committee had done over almost a year prior. The rule that went to I car, this is where we get to alphabet soup, but we had I car in a formal filing with the Secretary of State. There were three public hearings in the fall with a hundred and eighty attendees and nearly a hundred written comments. We closed the public comment period on October twenty-fifth, and since then, the E Q S Subcommittee has been working, um, to process public comments as well as have the rules subject to, um, a thorough legal review. And that has occurred between November and March. We've had twelve committee meetings, including two joint meetings with the E Q S, um, and twenty-two hundred committees, again, the legal review. We did ask for an extension for L car, which is the legislative committee that now will review the rule until June fifth, just because we needed a little bit of extra time to finish up all that good work. So, Kim, do you want to talk about public comment?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. Um, so our public comments fell into some general categories. There were some comment directed at the statement of purpose, at the definitions, the applicability to independent schools, the curriculum and learning content areas, and tiered systems of support. Those were sort of the general buckets that each of the hundred-plus comments we received, um, fell into. And within the the work that we did as a committee from those public comments, we have some sort of general responses to those general buckets. Within the statement of purpose, we modified to retain the intention, and within definitions, we removed those that no longer appeared in the document. That seems sort of basic, but, um, there, because of other revisions in the document, there were some definitions that were no longer, they were defining words or a series of words that weren't in the document. Um, we modified the definition of discrimination. And to, uh, respond to the concern regarding extending it beyond, um, protected classes, but have also addressed intention within the statement of purpose. We removed those that were substantively defined in statute. Uh, we are not required to redefine anything that appears in statute or session law. We moved descriptive language into the body of the document where it was applicable. To be clear, statement of purpose and definitions are not really operational. So the, the body of the document is where the instruction to what these standards are supposed to do happens. And so appropriately, if there were more descriptive language, and it fit in a particular section of the rule, that's where we put it. Um, we included definitions for agency to be the agency of education and state board to be the state board of education. And we reorganized to move the definitions up in the document and consolidated staffing requirements, because there's some caseload requirements. They were a little bit scattered throughout the document, so our reorganization was looking to move things into what made more sense in a logical order, and, um, when you've got a historical document that had previously been put together in twenty-fourteen, it can lend itself to that zoom out and make sure this is user-friendly and organized in a manner that makes sense. We clarified, um, the level of governance and who's responsible, so articulating S U S D where appropriate, or supervisory union, supervisory district where appropriate, or there are a couple of areas where we needed to address that it was at a school level. And then the effective date of request on that was that there be a consistent effective date throughout. We moved that date to July one, twenty twenty-five, to give districts time to be planning and budgeting for their needs to be responsive, and also aligned with the implementation of district quality standards, which is through the A O E. And we, um, sort of clarified just that A O E is the supporting agency for implementation. And then, as we mentioned, we had had a legal review prior to last May with a separate outside council, and then Sarah came on in the context of twenty-two hundred and has been supporting us throughout, Sarah Buxton, as our legal counsel. So we've had a a couple of different legal reviews on the document and have, um, taken those into consideration and provided a few other clarifications. Um, in terms of process, and we're gonna walk through the document next, so we'll get to those details, so, uh, and any questions you all have. But in terms of next steps, we're gonna review it today with you, our recommendations, and walk through the document. And the, the E Q S Committee, just yesterday afternoon, voted out unanimously the version that we're proposing to you in version eighteen. We're gonna ask that you review as board members after our walkthrough and provide us with any written comments, feedbacks, questions. No later than Tuesday, the twenty-sixth. We appreciate there's several holidays coming up and want to offer people some time and to do your review. I know it, this is not new. We had this very thorough process last May, but we obviously, in response to public comment, it is a newer document, so please take your time. Offer us your feedback. Tammy and I will consolidate that, and the E Q S Committee is meeting on Monday, April first, to take into account those considerations. As has happened in the past, it may be that it was, your comments may be an area where we had a deep dive and a body of work, and we just need to have you understand how that's reflected and what's there, or we may have missed something that we want to make sure we've caught and incorporated, um, with your good feedback. We will have a special meeting unless somehow. We will have a special meeting unless somehow you are all crystal clear and we're voting today, but I don't think we warned that. So we are anticipating a special meeting that I imagine might be sometime during the week of the 8th. And I'll leave that to Jennifer to, to work on. And then once the State Board of Ed has approved, we have to file with LCAR no later than April 17. Or I'm sorry, we should approve no later than April 17. Our filing materials, which is the document we'll approve, and additional materials that Tammy and I probably will work with Sarah to ensure all filing materials are complete, which is how we've done rules in the past. And those must be submitted to LCAR no later than April 19th to make our final deadline of June 5th, but we do expect that we'd be invited to present at one of their main meetings by the end of May. So that is what we have ahead of us, folks. And I, if there's any questions on process, happy to take them, or maybe they'll be after as well. Otherwise, I'd love for us just to be able to have, and Sarah, if it's okay, I'd like to invite you to pull it up and walk us through, and then EQS Committee members, thank you. And please, I know some have expressed interest in speaking and not speaking, but I'm going to invite you all, as Tammy and I will, as well as Sarah walks through. And if there's any expansion on the comments Sarah is going to share, please just unmute and offer that extension on the reflection on what we did and why we did it.
Yeah, if I may, before we do a deep dive, let's just take a pause here. And, and I, I just want to ask my colleagues on the board, you know, are there global questions that you have about process changes that you saw in your initial review? There's just a lot of detail that we might go into, into our walkthrough, but if there are things that you already know that are of interest, or, you know, it would be helpful, maybe if we flagged them now, so we can prioritize those with the time that we have. And if you haven't had a chance to read through it, that's okay, too.
No, the only thing I'll say is I appreciate the deadline for providing feedback, because I went through it last night, but obviously, the 11:00 PM to 1:00 AM review was not going to be as robust as, you know, having some time to sit with it. And I, I, my, my overall, you know, 30,000-foot reaction is that this is a tremendous amount of work, both in terms of time that went into it, but also, you know, the product that has been produced. So I just want to acknowledge the tireless efforts truly of, you know, Tammy and Kim as our co-chairs. You know, Tom and Patrick Brown had been on the committee. You know, now we're ably added to by Mohammed and Gray and Rich. So I just, I really want to acknowledge the work of the EQS Committee, and frankly, the work of the Act One Working Group. And this has just been a lot of work, a labor of love, and it's exciting for me to be at this point in the process. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I think the only other thing I'll add, thanks, Jennifer, is that the version 17 that we sent folks last Friday and was in the board packet last Friday is very minorly altered in what you have before you as version 18. So if you had the opportunity to review package information over the weekend, don't worry that that was for naught. The version 18 that you see before you is, again, very minorly altered, and it was the result of some final tweaks that the EQS Committee did yesterday afternoon. All right.
But zooming out, any big questions? Things that you want to make sure that we highlight or discuss? As he said, there's a lot of detail in here, and we could lose the forest for the trees. I know there was a question about definitions and sort of what they are and why we have them, so like, I think let's make sure we address that as we go through. Other, other things that are particularly interest, of particular interest to folks? It's okay if not. I just want to make sure that we keep track of those larger issues or comments or interests. Sarah.
All right. There's some amount of red, well, there's a lot of reorganization here, and I, I don't want members to feel like it's too confusing. So there's one overarching set of changes that I think is important to call out in the beginning. And that is, in the first draft, you noted SUSD. And the committee, this draft now writes out supervisory union, supervisory district, school district, and that identifies the entity that is being named in that particular instance. So you'll see some change there. Also, one of the overarching policy decisions of the committee that you'll see reflected here was that in naming who is responsible for what activity, they asked that a review be conducted where if the, if the legislature or the Green Book or the law directs a duty specifically to a school district, or school, or superintendent, or supervisory union, that, that obviously be reflected in the document. But where there was some discretion for the board to name a responsible entity, they preferred that unit of responsibility to be at the higher level, for example, supervisory union or supervisory district. And in checking all of those decision points along the way, it's my view that you've, you've correctly named and you aren't improperly naming a responsible entity. And if you have questions as we go, I'm not going to point out every single one. But if you feel Kim and Tammy and any member of the committee, as we're scrolling down, that you want to pause, because there was a moment that you think that your discussion is worth sharing, just shout it out. So I'll start with the statement of purpose. This statement of purpose reflects some changes to this language around the prohibition of discrimination. It continues to include language that does prohibit discriminating. It is aligned with federal and state law, and it names protected classes that are currently recognized under case law and federal and state law. It restates right within the statement of purpose, the actual prohibition against discrimination that is contained later on. The other change in this, sorry, it kind of crosses both pages, is that the board describes the nondiscriminatory protections in Section 2113, which we'll, we'll get to. And it describes that in addition to that, it's the board's intent that students are protected from discrimination and are able to participate in the general life or activities of school and are not prevented from doing so based on a number of other characteristics, including some of which aren't, which aren't actually legally protected classes, but are very important to the board and the, the board wishes to ensure that schools understand that that is the intention of many of the changes here stemming from Act One, is to, is to provide greater awareness, understanding, and inclusion.
I think it would be important to note there that that expanded list had been originally in the definition of discrimination. And so in altering the definition of discrimination to align with protected classes and not overreach our authority, we wanted to ensure that those that had been informed by the Act One Working Group's recommendation and identifying other categories that aren't technically legally protected, but it would be contrary to the board's intent that if, to discriminate for any of those reasons would also be contrary to the board's intent that all students experience an equitable, anti-racist, culturally responsive, antidiscriminatory, and inclusive learning environment. So we've stated values in that without without putting the definition of discrimination at odds with that which is legally protected. And that was how we brought back in those other categories that were importantly identified as seeking protection in practice in our schools.
Right? Um, I'm not going to stop at every piece of red crossout. And Tammy and Kim, if you think I appropriately scroll through something important, let me know. So as noted earlier, the definition section is now just after the statement of purpose. So I'll just go through some of the changes here with definitions. Because, because in a number areas, we talk about who does what, and the words can be confusing. We, we have clarified for the reader that the board, you'll see later on, that the State Board is referred to as the State Board. Small b, Board is usually characterized by whether it's a supervisory union board or a district board, et cetera. The agency obviously means the Agency of Education, but there are some references to other state entities here, so we wanted to make sure that that was clear. The definition of academic record was one of the definitions that was pulled into the body of the rule. Many times in the document, you'll, we have, we make reference to schools being free or learning environments being free of anti-racist, antidiscriminatory practices, inclusive environments. There's a set of words that you see repeated over and over, and so antidiscrimination became antidiscriminatory because it's the word that's used. And we characterized, though, we, we moved those definitions just slightly to be a little bit more clear about the fact that these are the practices that the, the board expressly is pointing to. As a general matter, words that aren't used in the rule have been removed. And in general, words that made a an explanation about their meaning rather than a more strict reading of what maybe a definition is, have been altered through the definition section to, to indicate to the reader that in this definition, you are describing how the word should be applied. And so civic and community engagement is an example of where more appropriately describing that that's what that term refers to. And it leaves open that more, sometimes, sometimes other common meanings can be applied when, when it makes sense in, in the context of the rule. So culturally responsive teaching also was not in the rule. The committee thought that the definition and, and what it was trying to bring forth was important. And so this is a definition that was brought down into the body of the rule. I believe, yes, so it is now included in, I think this is the on content section, but I identified it in the, in 2120.5 below, so we'll, we'll see it below. The committee, or the board, I believe, has seen this definition of discrimination. And this is a definition that does align in response to some comment that was received. It aligns with the current bounds of state and federal law with what discrimination refers to. The education support team, this was brought into the tiered systems of support definition below and expanded upon. And so we'll see that below. Education technology was not used in the rules. Or equitable. Again, they, the committee looked at this definition and similarly inclusive and inclusion. They're a little unique in that the concept applies to actually two terms. And so they wanted to ensure that the reader and practitioners who are implementing this rule understand that when those terms are, are used, equity or equitable, for example, that there's a clear understanding of what that means as it applies to these rules. And so the, the, the language describing that has been altered a little bit, so that it says, equity be equity or equitable, as referenced in these rules, in relation to schools or educational programs, results in each student receiving the resources and educational opportunities to learn and thrive in all aspects of learning, school, life, career, technical education, and community-school interactions, and to discover and cultivate their talents and interests. To be achieved, equity requires an inclusive school environment and may necessitate an unequal distribution of resources and services based on the needs of each student. The next two words are currently defined in law. They're defined in Act One. There are other examples of this as we go through the rule. The committee, as noted in the intro slides, properly took out words that are currently defined by the General Assembly in law. And that, I think, is, is appropriate because to to have defined them here in the, in the rule would be duplicative, and it's outside of what is normally done in rules, as we reviewed other rules, not only for the Agency of Education, but just in general. If a word is defined in law, it is not typically, unless there's a, a real specific need for it, it is not defined in a rule. So we've, we've taken those out so that the legislative intent has spoken and it prevails when the term is used within the rule. It would be, it would be the, the, the legal definition would be the one that would apply.
I think that also ensures that if there are changes to things that are already defined in any of these areas, or that we don't have regulation then that is in conflict
Absolutely.
with law. And so it, that has been how we've addressed it for several definitions.
Yes. And in some of these, it's, it's quite apparent that they may be areas of common review from the legislature. Supervisory unions and supervisory districts are terms, and those governance structures have been considered heavily by the legislature in the last 10 years. So, for example, if they were to redefine what those words are, that would apply to the rules. Evidence-based, we described evidence-based as also having the same meaning that it has under federal law. Just to be clear, that that is, that is something that the federal government in the Department of Education has defined evidence-based, and it is an important definition and term. It applies to many parts of educational programs and grants. Inclusion, inclusion and inclusive are both, the definitions are modified just slightly for the same reasoning provided before with inclusive, I'm sorry, with equity and equitable to describe the practices, so that's clear. Interdisciplinary was not used in the rules, but has been included under, the, the content of the definition has been included in instructional strategies. We'll look at that below. As noted earlier, personalized learning plan actually is another good example of removing a definition because it's defined in law. The legislature may go back and continue to revise what a personalized learning plan is, and the committee and the board would expect that the rules would, would apply to that the same definition that the legislature might apply later on. Proficiency-based learning and proficiency-based graduation, we separated those terms so that proficiency-based learning has the same definition that it had previously in the rules. But we took the proficiency based graduation component and added it to the newly added term proficient proficiency based graduation requirements. Proficiency based graduation requirements was a term that was added this time. And it was approved in the proposed rule last May. And so we just separated out what proficiency based learning is from what the proficiency based graduation requirements are. And that just makes it more clear. Similarly, and I skipped past this earlier with ethnicity, but for both race and ethnicity, those are terms that also can be, can reflect a protected, a legally protected class. And so the committee considered these definitions and wanted to ensure that in practice through these rules, that these definitions were, were part of how the rules were applied, but didn't want to interfere with the possibility that if there were enforcement in the rules later on in litigation or in some other context, that you also recognize that these are legally protected classes and that the, the definition of what race and ethnicity are under case law or under any other statutory regulatory structure should also apply. And you wouldn't, you wouldn't, you're not attempting to replace that either case law or regulatory structure.
Wait, Sarah, can I interrupt?
Sure.
So I'm can, can you explain why, I mean, it feels like race is being treated maybe differently than other terms that are legally defined elsewhere? So.
So there isn't, in, in title 16, there isn't a specific definition of race. So it doesn't fall into the same category that I could find in my legal research that it's clearly defined in statute in that way. So both for race and ethnicity, many of the definitions that are commonly applied as these, you know, in civil rights litigation stem from case law.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Similarly, with racism, we had described above, we wanted to ensure that when the word racism was used in these words, that the reader understood the full context, the descriptive words that the, the committee intended to describe what, what racism is in this context, hence the word embodies. Again, it means it doesn't, to say means would be to suggest that there may be other definitions that would apply. And the committee doesn't intend to exclude some other interpretations of racism unintentionally. Let's see, superintendent, supervisory union and supervisory district are all defined in law. We touched on that earlier. And I had already mentioned that state board is a new definition. Transcript is directly defined in the relevant section. Transferable skills are, were partly already defined in the curricular content now called learning content section. But a few elements of that definition weren't included. So we brought the whole definition down and included it in the rule. And that concludes the definition section and I'll pause there for questions, comments, discussion. So, yeah, go ahead, Kim.
I was just going to say, thanks, Sarah. I just, I think it's probably worth noting that when the EQS committee took on the document, we began with definitions and took months of testimony in 2022, I think. And, and spent a good deal of time here trying to streamline the definitions to establish common understanding for how it applies to executing on these rules. And to not put more than was necessary, but to ensure that what we put has as much clarity as it possibly could. It's been, they've been very well informed and, and the focus of a lot of the work. I thought it was worth noting. Go ahead, Tom.
Thanks. And thanks to the committee. I know how much work this, this took and is taking. And so I want to be clear that when the ones that have been removed because they're defined by law or statute, that's Vermont law, Vermont statute that we're using as that filter. And second question is, was there any discussion? I'm looking at universal design for learning. And it's not in the document, but somehow I think it was the act one working group that put that, that was, I don't think that's legacy language. I think that that was, came out of the working group. And I'm wondering if there was a place where they intended it to be applicable and was there any, did you receive any comments about that? And I'm just, that's the one that jumped up, but there are a couple others that don't, don't appear in the rules. But somehow the definition was important enough to include in the, in the document.
I'll tell you where universally designed instruction was. And then where it came out, and then I'll let, let Kami or Tim, Tammy or Kim speak to the, to the other part. Universally designed instruction was part of an amendment that was made or a modification that was made to the personalized learning plan definition. So UDI wasn't in the rule, but it was part of a change to the definition of or proposed change in the definition of personal learning plan. And since personal learning plan is already defined in law, that came out, and that's why universally designed instruction also was removed because it wasn't referred to anywhere else in the rule. That's the technical background on that one. I think as to the other ones, I, I believe, just I'm just kind of reading into the instruction I got from the committee. Any, any definition that was going to be removed because it wasn't used did get one or two or three second looks to see if there was a way that the content of that definition, even if it wasn't the use of the term, but what was really the essence of what was intended. I think they knew from the working groups work. If that could be, that, that spirit or that body could somehow be brought into the rules. And so you'll see that was done in a small number of cases.
Thank you.
We also look to see, and I think we did this time, even with our committee when we were together, if a variation on the set of words was used elsewhere in the document and required some further definition. We tried to align the way it was used and putting it in the definition. And as Sarah mentioned, UDI was in the definition of personalized learning, which was already defined in law. So I think as you look through for, with your historical eye too, from our deep dive when you were on our committee and offer your comments to us, if there are things that require more resource or you see areas where that concept belongs in the content, please do be specific and I'll invite all of you to be specific in your questions, concerns and recommendations. That will be helpful to the committee.
All right, moving on. We're now into the body of the rules and I'm going to start, I'm going to just kind of stay at some of the, the more significant, the areas where there was more significant conversation. But can Tammy again, stop if you feel like you need anything. The committee did discuss whether it would be prudent to go through every section of the rules and insert words to the effect of independent schools to whom these rules apply. As you recall, independent schools can be designated as meeting education quality standards under 165. And sometimes the language of the rest of the rules can be somewhat confusing as to whether how that applies to independent schools because they don't, for example, have a supervisory union board or a superintendent. And so the, in, in an effort to be consistent with, with current practice and clear as to the application, they elected to here in the very beginning of the rules, describe how independent schools fit into these rules. And so I'll just read out loud the language of application. They've added that independent schools seeking designation that they meet education quality standards pursuant to 16 VSA 165 F must also meet the standards outlined in these rules. Except we're doing so is otherwise contrary to title 16 of the Vermont statutes annotated or the school is otherwise directed in state law. I'll say that language there means that nothing has changed from any interpretation that preceded the review of these rules until now. So for example, if title 16 somewhere says that independent schools must report something, then they still have to report the something. So that's where it does, it does outline that there may be some areas where you'll have to read the duties of independent schools to be both in line with EQS, if that's where they select to, or they opt in to being designated as meeting EQS. But they may also have other requirements or responsibilities elsewhere. And the committee opted not to go through that full legal analysis to, in every place point that out and just broadly say, this is how it applies. More importantly, they clarify that as the rules relate to independent schools meeting EQS, that any of the duties that are assigned to supervisory unions, supervisory districts, school districts or schools, that all means that they, they are assigned to the independent school. Any of the duties assigned to school boards will be assigned to the independent schools governing board. And any duty assigned to superintendents and principals will be assigned to the school's head of school, unless the context suggests otherwise. An example of where a duty would be assigned to a supervisory union or supervisory district would be the development of curriculum. And so this is clear that everything that, that in these rules that describes what the curriculum content should be and how that should be designed and implemented. Just because the rules assign it to the supervisory union board and independent or a supervisory union, an independent school can't say it doesn't apply to us. It does apply to them. And this is, this is the parallel structure in their, you know, in, in how they are structured that, that those parts apply. So that, that's how the committee opted to clarify that matter. There was a little bit of cleanup and one addition that was made to this next section, 2113. Previously, it existed as a number of clauses. And so the organizational cleanup was that the, there were some subsections that were created. Federal and state entitlements, the non discrimination language, the federal and state requirements, and the addition of a student record section. The federal and state entitlements really did not change. The discrimination, non discrimination language did not change. The federal and state requirements section did simply bring in from other areas in the rule where there might have been a stray reference to a particular requirement. So in this case, you'll see in 2113.3B later on in the rule, formerly in 2121.5, there was a requirement about regarding compliance with vision and hearing screening, immunization, child abuse reporting, et cetera. So those were all pulled into this one section in the beginning of the rules. Similarly, there were a few different references through the rules, including in the definitions to student record maintenance and retention. And so this is all in one area here. It's the, the definition of transcript and academic record are all brought into number one. And then the actual requirements of record retention and maintenance are in number two and three. The new language that would be, would have been added, I think pulls together the different clauses, so I'll just read it out loud. Each supervisory union, supervisory district and school district shall develop and implement new language here, policies and procedures for the secure collection, maintenance, disclosure, transfer and destruction of academic records. Policies shall ensure that records are kept physically and electronically secure. The remainder of the language is familiar, was in previous iterations of the rule. And then new language at the very end says that school personnel shall protect the confidentiality of all student information and release information only as permitted by law. These general requirements are not new to any school that currently must abide by FERPA. So there, there is nothing new administratively for school districts. We clarified in number three, that school districts that operates grades nine through 12 may, should maintain the records of graduates and what was formerly called dropouts. We called withdrawn students. So they will be permanently maintaining those academic records at those schools. We understood that from informal research to be the actual practice and just wanted to clarify that. Particularly because if there is application to other, like independent schools who want to meet these standards, that these record maintenance requirements are, are clear. All right. Instructional practices and curriculum development. Here, the word interdisciplinary was included in instructional practices. So while the word interdisciplinary wasn't used, the remainder of, you know, the, the essence of the definition was brought in so that you are directing that educators promote personalization and high expectations for each student to successfully engage in the curriculum delivered and meet graduation requirements. And then practices employed by educators shall include examining and teaching a subject from multiple academic perspectives and encouraging students to engage with and to synthesize diverse perspectives and narratives, including those from the students' lived experiences into coherent understanding or analysis. The remainder of this section remains unchanged. And that closes out that section. The next section, career counseling and flexible pathways, we added the term career counseling because there is reference in 165 to these rules speaking to career counseling. And so it made sense just to ensure that to anyone wondering if the state is following what, or the board is following what 165 asked you to create rules around. You've titled this section, career counseling and flexible pathways. And this language. This, so this sentence here that is in red is not, most of it is not new lang, actually, all of it is not new language. It did exist previously in the CTE section. This particular sentence has been moved up. And other language that also continues in this general vein exists down below in CTE. And so I'll point that out as we go. The sentence itself restates part of 165 six. And it just ensures that directs that schools, SUs and SDs ensure that students receive appropriate career counseling and proper SUs and SDs, ensure that students receive appropriate career counseling and program information regarding the availability of education and apprenticeship program offerings at CTE centers. Further on, in the CTE section, 165.6 goes on to talk about the requirement for making, I think it's available genuine, offering genuine opportunities for participation in CTE. So because that's a little bit more specific to CTE, the remainder of that stayed in the CTE section. So I'll point that out when we go.
And I think I understand that to be an area of law currently under consideration. And I don't think any general reference that we've made in here precludes any further requirements that might make it through the session and become law. So we've tried to anticipate the flexibility to adapt to any changes that might fall in this area.
Here's, right here, I'll just quickly highlight it so you can see on your screen. That's, this is the sentence that we just looked at above. And it is repeated here to a small extent. Schools shall ensure that students receive appropriate career counseling. And instead of repeating the words program information regarding the availability of education apprenticeship offerings, we included the rest of 165.6 to say that schools shall ensure students receive appropriate career counseling and offer a genuine opportunity to access career technical education, or career technical center programs. And I'll just pause for a quick second, maybe while I think words were career technical center programs, but now I'm questioning whether that should be career technical education programs. I mean to bring us down a rabbit hole, but maybe that's something when you do your review, if you could just maybe offer whether that should say career technical center program or career technical education program. Learning plans. The two changes that were made to this section other than small edits were that in 16 VSA 941, there are two terms that are used that were worthy of inclusion in the rule. One is that another directive as related to PLPs, that school districts need to be engaged, that the students need to be engaged in ongoing personal learning planning process. And that it's documented by the PLP. The other addition was that in statute, it actually sets a date annually that the plan must be reviewed and that date is November 30th. The committee agreed that that would be worthy of making a little bit more clear for implementers of this section. Tiered systems of support was, there, there may seem to be a lot of changes here, but they are big changes, so it, it, it's not worth looking at them line by line. So generally, as, as Kim had noted earlier, tiered system of support was brought up because organizationally, it falls along the same category of consideration as PLPs and career counseling, flexible pathways, et cetera. It flows more naturally here and reading the rules. The substantive change here we added was that in 16 VSA 2902, the statute does say that every school district shall assign responsibility for developing and maintaining the tiered system of support, either to the superintendent pursuant to a contract or to the school principal. And I think that was in response to some of the comment about the need for clarity around responsibilities. And to some extent, this speaks to providing a little more clarity about responsibilities.
Just on that, these tiered systems of support, there, the 173 Working Group Census Base Funding Working Group had submitted a public comment. And it was basically the essence of their final report to the legislature. And within it was concern regarding the inconsistency of implementation of MTSS. And so while we aren't necessarily solving that problem, there's a good deal of guidance out on the AOE's website on this. We tried to, where we could call out the responsibilities as Sarah mentioned. So this is, the reorganization made sense when we began looking more closely at tiered systems of support. Everything that's green moved as it was. And then tho, those areas that are red were maybe our extension on those, that area and reflected that which we could within our statutory authority from where statute references MTSS. So we tried to, I guess, firm it up to the best we could within the rules based on the public comment we received. And anybody else hop in if I'm either misremembering or not fully making clear what we did there.
And yesterday, just to point out one difference between the draft that was provided to members late last week and, and today, the committee opted to be a little bit more directive in that student PLPs shall help inform structures and services put in, put in place to support individual student learning as opposed to should. So that was one change that's been made since, if you reviewed both previously.
It was not contrary to our statutory authority to do that. It's not really new. And things like the November 30th date that PLPs need to be reviewed by, I was like, where'd that come from? Well, it's, it's in statute, but we had not, I didn't know it. And I was around public education on a board for 15 years and had four kids go through our system. So it, you learn something new every day. And where we thought that clarity and expectations could be firmed up, we did so without running afoul of our statutory authority.
Previously, the prior draft had education support team in the definitions. We pulled that down into tiered systems of support here and in the red. The red language here, this is all pulled directly from the definition of education support team or the, the description of education support team in 16 VSA 2902. So that the education support team, the committee felt was a really important part of tiered systems of support and wanted to build out more of that description in the, in the body of the rule. So there isn't anything that's inconsistent here with what you've previously approved and what the legislature has also directed. You will see here, two sections that remain, school counseling services and a description of those as well as health services. What isn't here are a few areas where other staff requirements were, were tucked into multi-tiered, or to tiered systems of support. And because they were moved up, that the track changes doesn't, I guess, didn't capture that they stayed below, because they stayed below. But I'll point out where there were a couple of sections that were in tiered system of support that the committee thought more, more appropriately should live in descriptions about curriculum content areas is now renamed learning content areas. And that is to align with the, I think longstanding reference on the agency of education's part of what the curriculum content areas are. They call them learning content areas. And an example would be if you go on their website to see what the standards are, you'll see the literacy content area, mathematical content area, scientific practices, global citizenship, et cetera, et cetera. So the thinking was that it, using same language helps practitioners. You know what they're talking, everyone knows what we're referring to. So learning content areas are now, is now that the suggested name for 2120.5. Two changes that were made in this section. One is to more expressly direct, expressly describe that the duty to develop a written curriculum rests with the supervisory union or supervisory district. That is exactly what 261A says in Title 16. And so here in the rules, the committee wanted to erase any confusion that may be there about who has the responsibility of developing curriculum. And it, and very clearly says that it's the supervisory union or supervisory district that develops the written curriculum. In the next section, I'll point out that there's some more discussion about curriculum. But it speaks to the school boards, our school districts requirement to implement the curriculum. So supervisory union, supervisory district develops. The district implements. And then the right here, the, the definition of culturally responsive teaching seemed most appropriately to fall here. And so what had previously said culturally responsive teaching means knowledge of diverse cultures, the committee made it more operative and said that the knowledge of diverse cultures, languages, and perspectives shall be incorporated into the learning activities and curriculum design, including students' life experiences and ways of learning that helps students to both access rigorous curriculum and to develop higher order thinking skills. I see Mohammed.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry.
Oh, thank you, Sarah. Well, I just wanted to emphasize that with the language you just have mentioned, it should brought to light that we do not have a universal curriculum, statewide curriculum. Although we do have the Common Course Standards that any curriculum can be aligned with. Rather than having some folks thinking, oh, there's is an actual statewide curriculum, which we do not have just yet. Just wanted to emphasize that part a little bit. Thank you.
Yes, the committee certainly discussed that quite a bit. Moving on to the learning content areas, there was some public comment from art educators and music educators. One comment that expressed some concern with the arts being included in global citizenship for fear that it may suggest that a history of art would suffice to meet the aims of the board in terms of learning content area. And so the committee took that suggestion and removed that addition. And further, in artistic expression, there was some comment that spoke to wanting to describe what artistic expression meant a little bit more and to include an actual call out of music. So in reviewing what the board's approved standards are right now for artistic expression, they're, they're called the core art disciplines. And according to those approved standards, they are named dance, media arts, music, theater, and visual arts. And so the board took that comment and did expand artistic expression and core art disciplines. And then named the actual disciplines so that everyone is clear what is included in artistic expression. And that music is also specifically named. And transferable skill, oh, sorry.
I was just gonna add to that similar comments regarding the arts ask for a level of specificity similar to PE in the rules. And we had taken the reference to 16 VSA 131 as having been where that specificity hailed from. And as we looked deeper, that specificity isn't there. It may be well aligned with best practice as had been discussed and determined back in 2014 on the last set of the rules. We did not feel that we either had the time or ability to take greater testimony to either dial back the specificity on PE or enhance specificity on the arts. And, and felt in either direction, we'd be dramatically changing. You know, potentially offering unfunded mandates or compromising current budgeting as it relates to staffing requirements. So we acknowledge that that's an area that we haven't probably fully addressed in the way the arts community might have hoped. We also did not want to disrupt longstanding practice as articulated in these rules without a much deeper dive. And so this is how we approached it. And, and we did our best on that area.
Just, just to reiterate, I think it was the view of the committee that we were not going to make changes after public comment that ref, that represented major policy shifts, right, for schools and districts across the state, because we don't have another opportunity for public comment. And so these are really good rules. They're not perfect rules. And there will be opportunity in the future to come back and revisit some of these things. And I hope, and I think it's everybody's goal to do that. But also just in, in terms of fairness and transparency and sticking with what I think has been our commitment to sort of open process. It didn't feel to us as if it was our place to be making major policy shifts at this point.
Basically, we noted that transferable skills was in definitions. And part of that definition included, right here, what's in black ink. And the parts that weren't already here in describing transferable skills are, you see in red, they were pulled from the definition. So all of the description of what transferable skills are are now combined and included in, in this learning content area. This red here isn't, this just reorders, reorders this clause so that reference to students, including those who require additional assistance, leads the paragraph is that, that clause is at the beginning of the sentence rather than at the, the end of the, end of the, the sentence. Noted earlier.
I, I just want to flag, I think that we meant to leave state board there. I might be wrong. I think that
Oh, yes, you're right.
The standards by the state board. So I'm sorry for that.
Yep, no.
Nitpicky edit, but we missed it. That falls in the category of scrivener's error.
These are the little things we'll find when we reread top to bottom.
We will. The reason that's distinguished is that, you know, we reference school boards and then state board of ed. So we had previously thought, oh, we'll just do capital B and little b. We're back to state board when it's different to us.
All right, we already discussed that in this next section about curriculum. They didn't want to, the committee didn't want to restate what had been said above about whose responsibility it is for for creating curriculum. But here makes more clear that every school dis, each school district shall implement the written curriculum developed by the supervisory union according to the requirements above. And then A through F describe what the curriculum characteristics need to also include. Needs to be aligned with the standards approved by the board, et cetera, et cetera. Not many changes here. Don't think scrolling carefully, I don't think there's anything super substantive in these pieces. Graduation requirements, just as a general matter, there was some inconsistency as the evolution of this section and, and 2120.8, which was called local graduation requirements. There was some, it looks like there was some inconsistency about the requirements to graduate versus graduation. I'm sorry, the proficiency required, the proficiency required to graduate versus to, uh, graduate versus graduation requirements. And so the very minor changes were made here. The most important being that this reference, I'll just scroll down right here to the next, was to quote unquote, local graduation requirements. Um, that has been struck as well as the reference to local. So that it is clear that in terms of academic content, um, that again, the S U's create the curriculum, local districts implement it. But that right up here at the very top, uh, students meet the requirements for graduation when they demonstrate evidence of proficiency in the curriculum developed in the learning content outlined above. Um, and completion of any other requirements specified by the board of the school district attended by the student. This recognizes that some districts have additional requirements like, um, capstone projects or other community service requirements that, um, students may need to, um, meet before the school district will confer their, um, their diploma. And it's our belief that this is consistent with current practice and respects that the S U still directs the learning, the proficiencies, the curriculum. But that this difference around the graduation requirements outside of that can still exist at the school district level.
Jennifer?
Yeah, and this does not have anything to do with, um, that. I just wanted to give the board about a half hour warning. Um, it's, it's fine that we're like off schedule with the agenda, but we do have presidential scholars coming in at eleven fifty five who are taking time out of their school day to be with us. So if it's okay with the board, I mean, I don't know how much longer we're gonna spend on this, but I'd really like to hold sacred that eleven fifty five time with the presidential scholars and come back to this if we need to. But I just wanted to, you know, give everyone a good half hour warning on that. Thanks.
I think we've gotten through a lot of the more bigger discussion points.
I was gonna say, we're in the homes chat.
Any questions, concerns about graduation requirements? Um, I guess one, maybe Jenna, Lyle, th- those of you who've been principals and you may have a little more experience than I had in my research. Um, if you just wanna make sure that there's nothing there that we mistakenly changed, just give that section a little extra look. I think, I think it all looks pretty consistent with what currently occurs. School leadership, um, the, the changes that were really made here were into in this paragraph. Um, so we're on page nineteen. And the purpose of reorganizing this paragraph, we're to do two things um, and make it really expressly clear. And that is that supervisory union, supervisory district and school district boards all need to establish and make accessible inclusive processes for receiving public feedback. And that when doing so, the feedback needs to include students, legal guardians and staff regarding their experiences in the school system. And further, that the, the board wants them to, to these policies and this feedback mechanism to particularly pay attention to how those experience relate to racial, ethnic or social identity group experiences. So one leadership requirement here is the establishment of that feedback, um, component and what that looks like. The second is that boards and school leadership at all levels, um, relevant levels need to establish procedures for handling and responding directly to complaints regarding compliance with the school's, um, policies, practices and these educational quality standards. Elsewhere in the rules, particularly in the planning components, um, the board asks that these, uh, that the S U's, S D's and, and schools themselves um, maintain records of these complaints and, um, perhaps in some cases respond or reflect upon their response to those complaints and their handling of them. So it is clear here that that is an expectation that the complaints and the responses are a process that need to be developed and that they'll be included in their reporting, um, and that they need to remain, they need to, um, create, um, mechanisms for documenting them. I'll pause briefly here because that was probably one of the more substantive reworks in this part of the rule. Were any questions on that? Okay. Back down. Okay, so in staff, I'll quickly show you there weren't real substantive changes here to, um, the staffing section. It was a little bit just a reorganizational piece. Um, we added staffing requirements and put in all the references to staffing requirements that may have been in other areas, um, for example, tiered systems of support. So, um, there's a requirement for full-time licensed principals, special education staff, licensed special education staff, licensed school counselors, which was previously in M T S S. I'm sorry, yes, multi-tiered, uh, the tiered systems of support. And, um, the, uh, references to what the health department and, um, the roles of the, um, school nurse and associate, associate school nurse should be. So if they're in green lettering here, they didn't exist in the staff section, but were sprinkled elsewhere. And they've all now just been combined into one handy dandy section called staff requirements. We also broke out the distinction here with class size. No substantive changes made there, just um, spelling out numbers as is standard. Um, needs-based professional learning. Uh, don't think there were any substantive changes that were made in needs-based professional learning. Nope. Staff evaluation, small, um, edits or grammatical changes. This is the section for tiered systems of support that you saw moved upwards elsewhere in the document. Access to instructional materials, um, in response to a comment received that perhaps instructional materials in school, um, weren't as inclusive or reflective of, um, experiences or populations of the school. Um, the committee opted to similarly apply the language that has been applied many times in, in these rules that, um, the material, the material itself here in this case, um, also be anti-racist, culturally responsive, anti-discriminatory and inclusive. And no other further changes were made to the instructional material that you, um, seen. The only change that was made to the local comprehensive assessment system was here at the bottom where we, um, it wasn't a substantive change, but it was, uh, just a clarification that um, the components of that, um, plan and the assessment system would be, um, made available at least annually, the progress in meeting those planned requirements. It was just more expressly noted. Oops, here, um, there were two places in the rules where this sentence appeared. Implementation and support by the agency will be determined by the secretary. You'll see below, we pulled it into one, um, one sentence in its own section right before the effective date. Minimum reporting requirements, this should not be unfamiliar to you, the, the change, there are two changes, um, I believe, yep, in this section that were made. One is just to clarify that while the supervisory unions or supervisory districts will make the reports, that it will be on a school by school basis. One sixty five contemplates each school meeting education quality standards. And so for, um, you know, in the spirit of efficiency and larger units of, um, responsibility, the S U's and S D's will, will do that work, um, but that the data itself will be on a school by school basis. And you'll recall that, uh, requirements to disaggregate student level data, um, are now included in the rules. We clarified that the data related to publicly, um, publicly funded students who approve independent schools. Um, you, you will remember when we looked at twenty two hundred before, there's, uh, in statute, they are required to report their data to the secretary in a form approved by the secretary. And so we wanted to make sure that when districts, um, or, um, reporting entities were looking for this data, that they needed to go and the data needed to be available, made available by the secretary. Um, continuous improvement plans. Oh, this aligns with a, um, reference in the statement I made earlier that again, one plan may be submitted, but it would speak to, um, different schools if the entity submitting the plan such as a supervisory union oversaw different schools. So each, um, continuous improvement plan should reflect the needs of the individual school. And we're really coming to the home stretch here. Um, when they fought, it was never, it wasn't clear previously where you file your continuous improvement plan. So we noted that annually, these are filed with the agency. A little reorganization of that section. And then I'm gonna go to the very last substantive change here. Oh, here, let me just point out, remember earlier, we noted that, um, that there needed to be a review, um, of some aspects of the plan and that, um, districts were required, uh, supervisory unions and supervisory districts and districts needed to, um, include now their written feedback and complaints. Um, we said, we also needed the school to speak, or the committee said the school also needs to speak and account for their subsequent responses. So there's a level of accountability there in how they are, um, responding to the public and their feedback. And that would be, that would be submitted to the agency and would be on file. And then finally, I noted that, um, implement, implementation and support by the agency will be determined by the secretary, was the sentence used twice. The second time it was used was here under the effective date. So we just simply made, um, a general implementation and support section and said that implementation and support will be provided by the Agency of Education. Effective date is July one, twenty twenty five. Um, and that also aligns with the specific request of the Superintendent's Association, um, to provide some consistent timeline for, or some consistency in, um, planning and predictability with everything taking effect at the same time. So with that, yeah, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I mentioned before that I, that aligns with the implementation date for district quality standards as well.
That concludes the walkthrough.
Thank you, Sarah. Um, and let me just take this opportunity to specifically thank Sarah. Um, I think we are incredibly lucky to have your guidance. And I just, I really appreciate, you know, how, how you've sort of thought through rearranging these, pulling things in, in from other sections and statutes and, um, you know, making it a very readable document. Um, I know that's not easy. So, but I, I really think that you've done a terrific job with this. So thank you.
Thank you. I've worked with a, an amazing team. I have to say this EQS team is not that the twenty two hundred team isn't equally collaborative, but the EQS team really takes a, a really full team approach and is very thoughtful about every change and the implications of each change. And I really appreciated that process and learned a great deal from, um, those members. So thank you for that opportunity.
Really, there's a lot of gratitude to go around. We, um, came into this work by virtue of the hard work of the ACWAN Working Group ahead of us. Then the hard work of our previously constituted EQS team for that year and all of those who came to the table to help us think through the implementability of it. And then, um, this board for our deep dive last spring. And then a very engaged community throughout Vermont offering us a hundred points of feedback and showing up in numbers at our three, um, listening sessions or public hearings to amount to a hundred and eighty people. So, um, well-informed, privileged for us to be helping to guide it through its iterations. And big sigh to think that we're at a place where we get to have you guys dive deeply in sort of this round of it and, um, let us know your thoughts so that we can organize ourselves, um, be responsive and be ready to say, yes, thank you. Elkar, what do you think?
Anything else for Kim, Tammy, Sarah? Um, remind us again, our deadline to get back to you is
Next Tuesday.
Twenty six. And certainly we'll take it earlier. We're gonna, um, organize ourselves around it so that we can be prepared as a committee to address any feedback, um, for April first. And then hopefully Jennifer, looking at what I think will probably be the week of April eighth, a special meeting of the full board. Go ahead, Sarah.
If any member would prefer a Word version rather than the PDF which you have, please just reach out to me and I'll, I'll send you something if you, if your working style is, um, or like track changes instead of re-typing feedback, I'm happy to do that.
All right, thank you. Um, all right, if there's nothing else, I'm gonna close that one off. Um, so we have the presidential scholars coming in in fifteen minutes. Um, I think the update on twenty two hundred, as I had, um, alluded to earlier, will be short. Um, I probably could do that now and then we could have, you know, a good five minutes for a break and then come back promptly at eleven fifty five, if that works for everybody. Um, all right, so twenty two hundred update. Um, Kim, Tom, Sarah and I met three times since our last, um, monthly meeting, last month in February. So we met on March seventh, March thirteenth and March nineteenth. Um, our work included, you know, processing public comments and we spent some time looking at definitions, the, um, applicability of CTEs to independent schools and those regulations. Uh, we looked at the statement of purpose, the annual compliance assurance and the process for recognizing accrediting agencies. Um, we are close to finishing, like super, super close to finishing, um, public comment. So, um, we're gonna take a brief pause on our work, but, um, I think once we resume, um, we will be back to you. Hopefully not too terribly long, but you know, to, to be continued. Um, but we will preview with updates as we continue our work. Any questions on that? All right. Um, shall we take a break and come back at eleven fifty five? All right. Um, all right, this has been a great morning working session. Um, we'll take a brief pause if you can turn off your cameras and your microphones and I will see everyone back here. Please be prompt, um, cause we don't want to keep our students waiting. Thanks. All right, so it is eleven fifty five. I'm gonna, um, call us back to order. Um, next up on our agenda, you know, we've had a really busy, hardworking morning. Now we get to do something just really kind of fun and celebratory. Um, so this is our presidential scholars, um, part of the agenda. And I see that we are joined by Sigrid Olsen, who is the, um, curriculum and instruction coordinator for the Agency of Education. Is Ryan also, yep, Ryan, Ryan Parkman, the personalized learning program manager for the agency is also here. And I think we've got at least some of our, um, presidential scholars for the year. So let me turn it over maybe to Sig, Sigrid and Ryan and then, um, So let me turn it over maybe to Sig, Sigrid and Ryan and then, um, we will have an opportunity to meet, um, the scholars who have taken time out of their busy day to be with us today. So thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Um, again, my name is Sigrid Olsen. I'm the Curriculum and Instruction Coordinator for the Agency of Education, but I have also had the pleasure of being, um, involved with Presidential Scholars for probably about ten years now. So I'm really glad that we have some of our scholars here today for you to get to say hello to. I wanted to just tell you very briefly what Presidential Scholars is. Um, first I wanted to, uh, recognize two of my colleagues that aren't here, Doug Webster from our CTE team and Lisa Bressler, who is our art specialist. So keeping those two people in mind are the Presidential Scholars recognizes students in three different areas, the arts, CTE and the general category. And the general category focuses on excellence in a lot of different things, academic excellence, but also excellence outside of the classroom. And these awards are based on, especially the general and CTE awards are based on the same awards on the national level that are run by the US DOE. However, we've worked really hard here in Vermont to tailor the awards to, um, Vermont's education landscape. So we try to recognize students for achievements that go above and beyond test scores and GPAs that personalize their learning and that where they're really showing that they're creating their own pathways to success. And, um, each year we have one of my favorite days of the year and that's our celebration or our ceremony for Presidential Scholars. And that's held in the House chambers where the chambers are full of students, parents, teachers, guidance counselors, principals. Um, and where we are really recognizing the outstanding work that all these students have achieved. This year we had over a hundred and fifty people in attendance. And most years when we can, we have either the governor or the Secretary of Education, um, kick off the evening by, recognizing the students. And you'll get to, to meet our students who are here today, but I wanted to just give you some quick bullet points of some of the achievements of this year's Presidential Scholars. So you can see the kind of outstanding work, um, and for, for communities in the arts, um, that students around Vermont are doing. So a quick, a quick little bullet list, um, one of our students won awards in national poetry competitions. One student had his musical compositions featured in performances by the Vermont Philharmonic and the Vermont Symphony Orchestra and Choir. We had a CTE winner who, um, was active in the diversity club and, and the black student union at her former school. She's deeply committed to learning about other cul- cultures and history and providing a welcome space for everyone to celebrate their backgrounds. Uh, one student for her CTE program's capstone project partnered with NASA engineers to design and manufacture a self-contained biome that could be used for efficient food production in urban, remote or even extraterrestrial locations. I definitely had to read that one from my notes. We have a student who founded their school-based UNICEF chapter to increase awareness about global humanitarian issues. Uh, one of our Presidential Scholars was awarded the Burlington Youth of the Year as well as the Vermont Youth of the Year Award. Um, another scholar was co-president of their school's Human Rights Club, organizes local shelter drives and he organizes events for migrant justice. And, uh, another student founded her school newspaper and from that was moved on to be selected as the Vermont representative to the Al Newarth National Free Spirit and Journalism Conference in Washington DC. So, um, that's just a small portion of the incredible things that we get to every year, um, read about our students doing and their applications. And then we get to actually celebrate in person as we, um, come to the State House and and introduce those students and, um, again, recognize them for the things that they've achieved. And we do have some students here today. How do we want to, do we want them to introduce themselves or?
Yeah, I think that would be great. Um, and I, I mean, i- it can be as much or as little as the students want, but I think preliminarily, um, we would love to, you know, know your name, where you go to school. What your interests are, what your plans are for next year. So, I don't
Great.
I'm not sure who's here to be able to say, but
I'm keeping a little list, so I, I'll call on people just so we can, can move. And then if somebody else is here that I didn't see, we can. Um, so Maya, are you, can you, are you here and can introduce yourself?
Hi, good afternoon. I'm here. Um, my name, Maya Jones and I go to South Burlington High School. Um, my plans after high school is to enroll in CCV. And then hopefully, fingers crossed, transfer back down to Atlanta, Georgia, where I originally moved from to Vermont and go to Kennesaw State University. Um, yeah, like, um, Ms. Sindred said, I did, um, find slash create my school's black student union, make it like more open space for students of color in my school because when I first moved up here was like, it's like, I'm not used to, it's just a big culture shock for me. So, and one thing I'm big on is communication and making sure everyone's happy and comfortable. So I just wanted to implement and add something like that into my school and I did. So I'm very proud.
Right. Thank you, Maya. How about, um, Chris?
Hi, uh, my name is Chris Alfano. I am a senior at Burn Burton Academy in Manchester. Um, next year I plan to study political science at the University of Pennsylvania. Um, like, like Ms. Sigrid mentioned, I founded my school's UNICEF chapter and I'm also involved in student council here at PBA.
Good. Thanks, Chris. Farin.
Hi, I'm Farin Stainton and I go to Woodstock Union High School in Woodstock, Vermont. My main interests are like biology and neuroscience and I've been able to do some research with CRISPR technology while I've been here at Woodstock. And my plans for the next four years are still undecided. However, I'm planning on attending, um, college, uh, university. And at the moment I have acceptances ranging from University of Vermont to Middlebury College and I'm still waiting on my last four college decisions before I make my final choice.
Great. Thank you, Farin. Um, Miles.
Hi, um, I'm Miles Lake Hugh and I attend Burnburn Academy. Some of my interests include music, Spanish and science. And after graduation, I will attend Hamilton College in Clinton, New York, where I plan to pursue a degree in STEM.
Great. Are there any other Presidential Scholars that join that, um, whose names I didn't call? Okay. I, I'd like to also remind everyone present and the board that, um, part of one of your attachments for this meeting was the, um, the program for, for Presidential Scholars, which this year we really extended the program and had a, a pretty good description of every student. So if you, um, if you can take a minute to look through that, so you'll see even you'll, you'll see sort of the, the depth and, and breadth of the accomplishments that that are awarded in, for Presidential Scholars. One last thing that, that I'd like to bring up is that, uh, we'd like to bring your attention to one longstanding concern that we have and that educators in the field have. Um, this concern applies to the general category only. And, um, it's mandated by the US DOE that the Vermont Agency of Education um, believes is antithetical to Vermont statute board rule and really to Vermont values. Uh, students in the general category are required to identify as either male or female in their application. They're also asked to verify that they are US citizens. Over the years, we've asked the US DOE to change this requirement many times. And even Secretary Holcomb created a separate category, um, a sec- secretary's recognition category. Um, that includes a request sent directly from Secretary French. Each time we're told by our federal colleagues that the requirement cannot be changed unless, because it was created by an executive order. And we just like to raise this issue and hope to enlist your support um, and encourage you to elevate this issue to legislative colleagues and Vermont's congressional delegation. In light of, again, Vermont values and, and the equity that we see that we know that, that the board is working very hard on around, um, updated EQS. So we know that's a, that's a big concern of the board. So we wanted to just, uh, throw that out there for your, for your understanding of the process.
Yeah, well, thank you. And I noticed one of the recipients actually wanted two different categories and I did notice the change in pronouns, but now you know, thanks for filling in the blanks on that.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, that's good to know. And, um, you know, certainly we would love to help in that endeavor.
Thank you.
Um, so I'm curious, um, and, and, and this is where I get excited about the future of, you know, Vermont and our country and humanity generally. Um, it, it was just really nice for me to be able to read through, um, like all of the different descriptions and, you know, your interests and your talents and, you know, really what, what keeps you guys, um, you know, up at night and, you know, working on things. So I appreciate, you know, the, the work that you're doing offline and it's great to be able to, you know, have you here with us today. I'm just curious, um, was the application process, was that like, cause I know you're all busy. Was that like one more thing? Was that kind of an easy thing to roll into what you were doing? Um, any, any thoughts on that? Okay.
I can talk about it really quickly. Um, I, um, so for my application process, I was, so it's a nominate. For me, I was nominated by my school counselor and I just had to write a paragraph and then she did the rest. I don't know that was the way it's supposed to be, but it was pretty simple for me. And, um, I thought it wasn't too much work to like add on to my busy schedule.
Great.
I would agree with that. Um, and I also found there was a lot of overlap from applying to different colleges. So I think that, that probably helped out in the process. I was able to cut and paste and reuse some of the parts.
Yeah, same. My counselor also nominated me. She was like, uh, what things do you talk about or advocate? A whole bunch of copy and pasting for a lot of stuff, but yeah.
So the, the application process really starts with your high school counselor, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Okay.
For me, it was actually a little different because, uh, my school had already nominated two people. So I had to self-nominate myself, which entailed like a little more work. So I'd answer some more questions, but like Chris said, there's a lot of overlap from the college application.
So, and that's really good to know too, um, that you can nominate yourself, um, and that there's a process that clearly worked. So, that's really great.
We added that, oh, sorry, we added that ability for students to nominate themselves when we, when we were thinking about the process and really thinking about, again, in, in Vermont, how we value students uh, personalizing their learning, um, students being in, um, having, um, say over their learning and their, their personalized learning plans. And we thought that, that uh, we're not, we don't know of another state that does that. I, I think we're unique in that, that students can nominate themselves. And so that is, um, another area that we'd love to, um, expand and, and have more students, um, taking charge of that application.
And then what's the next step? Because, um, then there's the, the national Presidential Scholars. Can you talk about how that process works?
Sure. So in, um, we are in the general category. We are allowed to, uh, again, this is around this issue that I was talking about earlier. We are allowed to, um, recognize and send to the US DOE ten males and ten females for them to, um, include, to invite to apply for the national Presidential Scholar recognition. That same, the, uh, that same stipulation does not apply to CTE. CTE just has to send them five names. It doesn't specify male or female. Um, with the general category, uh, the US DOE from every state then also sends out invitations to apply for the process at the national level to Vermont students based on their SAT and ACT score. So what we do, the process that we come up with as a state is, is really important because it is, uh, again, sort of trying to recognize things that might not be shown in an ACT or an SAT score. Um, and, uh, so they, you'll see a number of Vermont students who are invited to apply at the national level, who didn't even participate in the Vermont, um, Presidential Scholars. But we get to, um, send those names forward to, for them to automatically be able to participate at that level or to apply at that level.
And is that an issue? Cause I know a lot of colleges these days are now ACT and SAT optional. Does that pose any problems for students who might not otherwise have taken the tests?
I don't know. I don't know if any of the students here have any thoughts about that. I could, I could imagine, um, that it would. I don't know that it would for, for Presidential Scholars that have been Vermont Presidential Scholars and uh, those of you in here today will be, you know, invited to apply at that level. But from the, from the US DOE down in selecting the students, it seems like that would, um, could possibly narrow their, the number of students that they're gonna select if they're basing it just on that. I don't know if any students have any thoughts about SAT or ACT.
Or did you guys all just take the SATs or ACTs anyway?
I ended up taking mine just in case, cause I applied to many different schools. Well, even though I stuck with one school, but like a lot of schools are like test optional these days. So I don't know if they're really gonna matter anymore after we graduate. So.
Yeah, I took the SAT, but I ended up not submitting my score to any school that I applied to. So.
Tammy.
First off, congratulations to you all. And this is like Jennifer said, it's really great to hear about the terrific things you're doing and where you're thinking of going to college and all of that. Keep us updated because now I'm really curious for some of you where you, what your decisions will be. Um, I also just wanted to thank Sigrid for bringing that, that issue around gender to our attention. Like that seems like a really important thing. And I'm sort of overlaying that with our discussion this morning around the EQS and what our values are in the state. And, you know, I'd like perhaps maybe this state board to give some thought to, um, writing a letter to the department, um, in our debt, in our congressional delegation. Again, calling this sort of elevating this issue again. It, it just is not aligned with our values here in the state and it seems really exclusionary and discriminatory from my perspective. So I just want to say thanks, Sigrid, for bringing that, that to our attention and just know that like it's something that has caught my eye and I, I hope that maybe as a board, we can have a discussion about that, um, because that seems like one of the places we might build a chime in. I don't know if we have any, how we sway, but you know, I'd like to think that maybe a letter from us might catch it, catch someone's eye and, and, you know, sometimes it takes one letter on top of another letter on top of another phone call to really elevate the issue. So. And I do hope that if there are members of the public attending this meeting, that he might take the same initiative. This seems to be a really important issue for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mohammed.
Well, echo Tammy and thank you for all your comments. Um, your kind words, very appreciative. I also want to take a moment to appreciate Sigrid, um, whom I have met behind the screen for a while now and being very supportive. Not only to adult, uh, adults apparently in their work, um, with creating PLPs. Now I see you here again with our wonderful Now I see you here again with our wonderful, amazing students supporting all around. We need more people like you. Keep up the good work and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. Good to see you.
So and I do realize we are at time. So I don't know if there are any parting questions, comments, good wishes. If not, again, I really want to thank the four of you for taking time out of your schedules to be with us here today. It was great to, well, a couple of you I know. Nice to meet the ones that I don't know, and it's just really lovely to have you guys here with us. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Hope you guys enjoy the rest of your day.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. So this brings us to the legislative update. And I believe we have Ted Fisher with us. We do.
Hello.
Welcome.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, awesome. I am joined by my colleague Lindsay Hedges. And we are going to jointly walk you guys through some bills this afternoon. Good to see you all. Thanks for having us join you. I am going to share my screen with your permission, Madam Chair.
Sure, thank you.
For reasons that will become apparent relatively immediately. We did not present this, provide this as as a reference for your packet. Because things are changing rapidly. And we're at that kind of time of the year. However, we are going to have the final slide deck uploaded to the website after the fact. So those these will be available to you as well through through Suzanne. And so I'm going to ask, because I am also operating just from my laptop today. So I'm going to ask for someone to confirm that they can see slides and not something else when I share here.
Yes, we can.
Okay, and we're seeing the presentation and not the.
Current. It says legislative update and has your names under it.
Awesome. Okay, cool. So thanks again for the record. My name's Ted Fisher. From the OE Communications Team, joined by my colleague Lindsay Hedges. We're going to kind of trade off here. We're actually going by the. By the who was assigned which bill analysis for our internal process. So it's not quite switching off, but we're just going to kind of run through. And then we'll hopefully have some time at the end for questions. We are doing wave tops here. I would recommend to you all, and we are happy to provide you links to the most recent past versions. I recommend that if you're interested in more detail, that you go and read the most up to date. Version of legislation, but we'll be happy to also do our best to answer questions. So. What I was hoping would happen did not happen here. Let's see if slides advance now. Okay, cool. So today, very briefly, we're going to go over. Where we are in the process. We'll talk about the bills that made crossover. And I'll briefly go over what crossover means for folks who may not be familiar. And then we'll wrap up by talking a little bit about kind of the spending environment. We are there with a caveat that I'm about an inch deep on a lot of the ad spending stuff. So I would be happy to try to answer some questions and may direct you guys to colleagues for more in depth. Information there. Okay, so. So we're at a a point in time in the legislative calendar that's referred to as crossover. Crossover is a is a deadline that the legislature imposes on itself for bills to leave their committee of origin. And move into the process. So usually what happens, depending on the bill, is that it will then leave. Its committee and then go oftentimes to one of the money committees. So to leave like the policy committees. Every example we're using here is either House or Senate Education always. But depending on the types of bill, and it might go to another policy committee if the work interrupts into overlaps. But oftentimes, it then goes to a money committee, either appropriations. Or in the House Ways and Means and Finance in the Senate. Depending on what is in the bill. And then that will, from there, it will then go to the floor. And then that body that originates it will pass it out and it will then be delivered to the opposite bodies' policy committee. So starts in the Senate. Might go to Senate Finance or Senate Appropriations. It'll then go to the Senate floor. The Senate will will pass it. And then it will go over and then it'll hit the House and the House will then refer it to House Education, for example. So last week was our policy crossover. This week is our money crossover. So we're looking, we're awaiting sort of news on the budget. And also the money committees are also going churning through all of their bills. A lot of floor time is happening right now as they pass everything that they've been working on and hand it over to the other body. By the calendar, we're actually a little bit past the halfway point of the session. We've been in for a little bit more than two months here. And then we have about a month and a half left in the session. They generally wrap in mid-May, depending on their timeline. They, we don't usually know until a couple of weeks in advance. Sometimes a little late is a week in advance when they're when they're going to be done. But they will generally generally, you can, you can. Expect around mid-May. So we're a little bit further, but with town meeting week and sort of the startup exercises that happened in the beginning of January. It's roughly halfway point in terms of the amount of time they've had to do policy work. So that's kind of where we are at. So it made sense for us to just review for you what are still. What are still live elements of policy now? I will put an enormous caveat on that, which is that. At any point along the way, things may change when they hit the other body. Or bills that may have been dead might be resurrected and put into place. So if you've been following an issue, you're not seeing it reflected here, it doesn't mean it's necessarily not going to happen. But these are just a good summation of the main work that our legislative. Education committees have been working on for the session. Okay, so we're going to just basically go in order, starting with the House. So the first bill. We're going to go over is called the, we're calling it the BOS, or it's called the BOSI Bill. So BOSI's is kind of a mouthful. As folks know, I'm a communications director. I don't love acronyms. BOSI says, I think BOSI is kind of an awkward acronym, but it is a national nationally used term in other states. And what it stands for is Boards of Cooperative Education Services. And so in this, in this bill, the House, House Education is really looking to try to create a shared services model. With entities that provide shared services across the state. This is a kind of a pretty interesting bill in that it's pretty expansive what the potential scope might be of these entities. They're also not, which is not entirely unusual, but fairly rare. They're not really putting any stringent requirements on school districts as to what they might do. But some of the things that they're thinking of in terms of how they might be helpful would be. Offering some of the extraordinary special education services that I know that you all are familiar with. Maybe basically allowing board, school boards or supervisor unions, excuse me, to band together to share those services. Apply for state, federal and local grants, provide professional development, offer procurement services. There's some hope that they would be able to provide either services and assistance on the back end in terms of data management and accounting. Or perhaps even streamline some of those at the BOSI level. House Education, I think, and I know from speaking to some of their members, is kind of intentionally not trying to put too much. Forward and really hoping that this will kind of grow organically. There is not a requirement in currently in contemplated in the bill that. That the supervisor unions join one, but there is a timeline for doing so. And the number of the BOSI's statewide is capped at seven. An important thing to note is that an SU that chooses to join a BOSI may only be the member of one BOSI. However, they may receive services for another BOSI. So let's just say that we have like the Northwest Vermont BOSI or the. You know, the the Champlain Valley BOSI or whatever, and it provides a certain type of specialized special education service. There's no reason why it couldn't offer those services to another SU that's not a member of that BOSI. But it would be on a sort of a fee for service model is kind of how it's contemplated. So the way they reached number seven is really interesting that we kind of divide. They divided the state into quadrants, which we tend to do, you know, internal to AOE. And maybe you you folks do as well, state divided into four four geographic quadrants. Plus a fifth, thinking about sort of the size of Chittenden County and the Champlain Valley, both from a student population and and. And regular population perspective. And then they added a sixth and then a seventh. So the idea would be that they would have, so there would be some flexibility in terms of how these things are are. Built geographically. And again, there's no requirement that an SU join. This is a voluntary thing. They do, however, have a timeline for 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 folks considering whether they want to join one and for their formation. Status as of what an hour ago, Lindsay, it passed out of Ways and Means. Ways and Means added a provision that I haven't had a chance to actually see yet, but it added a provision around creating essentially a startup grant. The AOE would administer. So that's where I said we weren't able to provide you the slide deck in advance. And that's because literally things are happening right now. So Ways and Means has passed several of the bills we're about to talk about just this morning. And so this is all very active. So we are just giving you the the updates verbally on where things stand right now. Given that the nature of sort of the fluidity of it. So. That's wherever BOSI's happy to try to answer some more questions in a few minutes, but we're going to keep rolling.
Hi, everyone. Again, my name is Lindsay Hedges. I am the agency's policy communication specialist. And the next bill that we're going to be focusing on passed out of the House. Is H eight seventy-three, which is an act relating to financing the testing for and remediation of the presence of polychlorinated biphenols. Commonly known as PCBs in schools. So this bill clarifies the role of both the agency and Agency of Education and the Agency of Natural Resources. Clarifies our roles around the testing, remediation and payment process. And it also establishes a process to fund PCB testing based on the appropriated funding. And so as written, absent available funding for testing, it exempts schools from the funding requirement until a comprehensive funding plan is established. The status of this bill, it was passed out of House Education, I believe, end of last week. And just this morning, it is in House Ways and Means. They could potentially be voting on it right now, but I'm not sure what the active status of it is. As you can see, House Ways and Means was very busy this morning doing lots of, taking on a lot of the education bills. So that's what we have for that one. And then the House Miscellaneous Education Bill eight seventy-four. So in both the House and the Senate, every year, they come up with a basically like an omnibus bill. That involves a lot of different changes in education law, a lot of technical corrections as well. And so this bill specifically that came out of the House has a few different sections. Sections one through four repeal the high school completion program and make technical corrections to the state's adult education program to sweep in students that were previously covered under the high school completion program. Sections five through seven continues the funding for community schools by reallocating the high school completion funding to this community schools program. So Sections one through seven are all kind of connected and they're tackling different, different provisions of law. Section eight requires districts to include military related options in career development and post-secondary planning resources. Section nine outlines intent language to review flexible pathways. Who I know you just heard from a lot of the flexible pathways, folks. The House Education Committee is very interested in taking a deeper dive into that program. And just kind of seeing, taking a look 10 years out, seeing. How all of those initiatives are working and tying into each other. Section 10 establishes establishes state collaboration between the Agency of Education, Commerce, Community Development, and as well as the Department of Labor. To work with Vermont colleges and report back on career and settlement behaviors of students attending Vermont institutions. And the goal of that is to really understand kind of what the retention of college students looks like in the state and how we can improve on that. And finally, section 11 takes language regarding uniform chart of accounts out of session law and puts it into statute. It's really a technical correction. And it's it's just codifying current practice of how our finance team is already using the uniform chart of accounts. Did see a hand. Do we want to, Ted, do we want to take questions now or wait until the end?
I think we are time limited. So with your permission, Madam Chair, let's take questions at the end.
All right. We will keep on moving into H eight seventy-one, which is the House School Construction Bill. An act relating to the development of an updated state aid to school construction program. And so this bill, as it was passed out of the House, creates a facility, facilities master plan grant program to support districts in developing construction master plans. So this is really would be like an SU wide vision for construction moving forward. It requires the AOE to work with Buildings and General Services to establish a list of pre-qualified consultants for districts to use. And the biggest portion of the bill is it establishes a state aid for school construction working group. And that's really meant to build upon the work of the previous task, task, excuse me, task force. That occurred last summer. And so they are charged with recommendations on implementation of a potential school construction program. And it's largely a legislative working group, but it will have support and leadership from AOE.
Apologies, my PowerPoint seems to be a bit sticky today. I'm going forward when I shouldn't be and not going forward when I want to be. Okay, so now we're moving over into the Senate. We now have a Senate Miscellaneous Education Bill. And this bill, again, we're going to go sort of by sections because it is omnibus. So the first section increases the pre-qualification threshold for public construction bids in Title sixteen. From five hundred thousand to two million. This is something that the AOE requested. Basically, what we're seeing is a scenario when school districts go out on their own to create. To do school construction projects, they are being. Outcompeted isn't even really the right word. What's happening is that their bids are less competitive than other projects in other industries. And that's because the requirements for pre-qualification that are in statute essentially make it more onerous for a bid, a construction firm to bid on the project. And so what we're seeing in an environment where there's lots of construction and costs are tight and there's a lot of demand for construction services. We're seeing contractors just not bid in the same numbers as they have historically for construction. So we're asking for this to be increased. The Senate Education has included it in the miscellaneous ed bill. We also have another technical section in Section two sixteen VSA. Section one seventy-six includes a list of all of us, as I think you are all familiar, includes a list of many of the post-secondary institutions that are approved in to operate in the state of Vermont. In recent years, many of those have closed. And they are still on the books in statute. We asked that those be removed this year, mostly out of concern that those. That those, their existence in statute might mean that they would be used, their name might be used by potential malicious actors going forward. So we're hoping to tighten up the statute and and make sure that they are not still existences, legal entities, even when the institution is closed. Section three established extends the implementation deadline for emergency operations plans established in Act twenty-nine of twenty twenty-three. If you remember when we presented to you last year, Act twenty-nine was our Omnibus School Safety Act. And one of the, one of the sections there was. Emergency Operations Plan requirement that, well, very, very good and important. Has kicked off a lot more local work on emergency operations plans. And so we've asked the legislature to extend the deadlines and to give school districts to do more work on that. Section four establishes a one-time data collection reporting requirement for how Holocaust education is taught pre-K through grade twelve in Vermont school systems. Section five expands access to virtual learning and allows districts to count fully virtual students in average daily membership. So as I think you are familiar, there is a virtual, there are virtual learning components right now in statute. Essentially, what we have asked, this is another one that AOE asked for. We've asked for an expansion of this program to allow students to fully, fully. Complete their whole school day online. And we're holding harmless districts that, you know. And we're holding harmless districts that, you know, and to make sure that students are still counted as enrolled in the school, even if they're fully learning through the Vermont Virtual Learning Cooperative, which is our, our state partner for that or through other means. And finally, section seven restores a hearing process to the home study statute under sixteen VSA one sixty-six B. We had, there had been some amendments to the home study process last year that we worked with the legislature on and Senate Education has, has decided to add back the hearings. Okay, S two oh four is literacy, an act reading, relating to reading assessment intervention. This bill is partially a bill composed of some elements of AOE that AOE requested, as well as things that the committee, were committee priorities and priorities of some of the legislators on the committee. We know that House Education also takes a keen interest in, in literacy. And so we expect to see more work on this bill done in the next body. But just for now, what S two oh four has is a reading assessment requirement for kindergarten through grade three with reading screeners identified by the Agency of Education, updates to existing statutory requirements and comprehensive reading plans. We have asked for professional learning requirements for new and current Vermont educators to just expand on that a little bit more. Under a previous literacy act, we received some, an appropriation from the legislature of some of the federal statewide COVID emergency funds, which were invested into a statewide literacy, set of literacy professional learning modules. And we're proposing to require that either those or a similarly stringent set of professional learning is completed by all currently serving Vermont educators and as well as new educators coming in so that all teachers in Vermont have a baseline grounding in the in the fundamentals of evidence-based literacy practices. There is a timeline for that, a couple of years for that process to be completed. There's also a requirement for AOE to review the educator preparation requirements and make represent recommendations to the standards board for professional educators for updates to the rules. That's the VS BPE rule series, which governs licensing requirements in the state as well as the ed prep programs. And then this bill also extends the advisory council on literacy and adds two new members. Those members are faculty of educator prep programs in Vermont. And if memory, my working memory serves, one is a state colleges and one is an independent colleges, if I, if I remember correctly. Okay. So passing it back to you, Lindsay.
So S two eighty-four is an act relating to the use of electronic devices and digital online products in schools. We've been calling it the cellphone bill. And so this bill requires the agency to develop a model policy pertaining to the use of cellphones and devices in schools. And as currently written, the model policy is not required to be adopted by schools. But there's some additional provisions in this bill requiring the AOE to report back on how many schools do and do not adopt this model policy.
Okay, so our last bill for today is S three oh four, which is career and technical education. The agency presented to the legislature, a package of career and technical education reforms, as well as some funding recommendations for this year. As you may be familiar, we've been engaged in many, many years of process of considering how we might improve and reform our career technical education system in Vermont. And there have been some legislatively required amended studies, most recently contracted by JFO with APA, which, which presented recommendations last year. And so the goal of this bill is to implement those recommendations. And there's also some governance pieces, which we're not looking to tackle this year, but hope to tackle in coming sessions. Currently, the Senate version does not have the finance pieces, but it has everything else. And so very quickly, I'm just going to give you some wave tops on that, which is we have a requirement added for school districts to provide career enrichment and exposure to middle school students, or talking about the grade six through eight period, just more exposure to CTE and all the opportunities it offers, as well as pre-tech and exploratory CT courses in grades nine and 10. Just for focuses to refresh folks' memory, CTE is, is commonly a grade eleven and grade twelve pathway in, in Vermont school system. So the hope here is to kind of build some exposure to what the CTE opportunities are in the years leading up, sort of starting in the middle school and then in early high school. There's a requirement for a school district adoption of a comprehensive career development policy, which will be developed by AOE. This is a policy construct that's been used by the legislature in the past where the AOE develops a model policy and then that model policy must be adopted by school districts. They may adopt their own, but it has to be at least as stringent as the model policy that we develop. And there's some really important intent language that CTE be included in future school facilities or school construction legislation. This was an important and key element of the conclusion of the APA report. However, as, as you heard from Lindsay a moment ago, there's already a ongoing process of which the, the current school facilities bill is just sort of the latest chapter. And there is a lot of intent in that process and in the report that was issued by the summer working group that CTE be included. So this intent language is really just to try to make sure that CTE isn't forgotten, but we do not want to create a separate school facilities CTE program that would be potentially duplicative and conflicting. So that's why this is just intent language here. Then there's a shift in oversight functions and rulemaking authority from the SPE to the Secretary of Education and program alignment with post-secondary education for several key programs. And I wasn't able to fit them all into the slide. So with your patience, I'm just going to very quickly pull up which of the key areas the legislature wanted included, or we actually asked for several of these, but they have added some. So this is a requirement to have see program and course articulation agreements between Vermont State Colleges and secondary CTE centers in the following manufacturing, engineering, health sciences, education and carpentry, construction and building trades. Okay, so that brings us to the end of our review of crossover bills. Just before we do that, I just want to give a brief update. I think many of you are familiar and may in fact reside in places where there were failed school budget votes during town meeting week or where you've seen budget reconsiderations. We did not add H eight fifty to our slide deck for today, mostly because it was passed in the events of town meeting day and that has since happened. But what H eight fifty did, which is very important, is it gave school districts the opportunity to postpone their budget votes in order to revote their budget, as well as shifted from the so-called five percent cap on school budgets that was put in place by Act one twenty-seven of twenty twenty-two to a discount model where depending on the, the funding weights transition, school districts received a various, a varied number of cents on their, on their property dollar discount. That happened right before town meeting week. The effect of it was that we didn't see, we, we didn't see that many budget, budget votes actually postponed and we did see a fair number of budgets that, that failed during that process. So we will see those be rewarned in the coming weeks. It's just, I just want to take this opportunity to mention those, and I do have those stats pulled. So I'm happy to go over those if folks are interested. But I did just want to note that we are carefully monitoring what is a much more uncertain education spending year at the current time than, than at least I've been through it. I've been with the agency since twenty eighteen, where the cost growth is obviously much higher than it has been in recent years, as well as the fact that we're just coming into kind of the final period of the session with far less certainty about kind of what the final numbers of education spending are. And just to give a little bit, in the interest of time, I don't want to go into too much detail, but to give a little bit of background on that, the legislature sets the yield based on the information about education spending that comes from town meeting day votes. And so the agency gathers that information, collects that information for the legislature so they know how much the ed fund is going to have to cover in terms of local education spending. And we are in a place where we have a lot more uncertainty of that in that while we're coming into kind of the final part of the legislature, legislative session, as well as we are in a period where there's, there's quite a bit more costs on the ed fund. So it's very uncertain. We're kind of keeping an eye on it. I think it's very much the, the biggest conversation that's happening, even while we're watching some bills get passed. It's the, 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 there isn't anything all that settled yet, but it's something that we're, we're certainly, it's, it's on the top of everyone's mind, I guess is the best way to say that. So with that, we'll be happy to take a few minutes to answer questions.
Great, thank you very much. And the, the slide presentation was really helpful. I had a couple of questions, but Tammy, you had had a hand up and I don't know if other board members had any questions.
I think a hand was lingering from our presidential scholars, but I do have a question. And Ted, do you mind going back a slide for me? Yeah, I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit more about bullet four that where, where apparently the agency has initiated this legislation, S three oh four, to shift oversight functions and rulemaking authority from the state board to the Secretary of Ed for CTE. And I also heard you say that this has been the work for many, many years. I'm a little curious about that, since we had never heard about that.
Yeah, absolutely. So, and I would have to, I would have to go back to see what, what I'm, I'd have to go back to take a look at some of the governance and, and other recommendations from the APA report. It's, it's fair to say we've been, we, and we being not just the agency, but the legislature has been engaged in many conversations about how best we can strengthen our CTE program. The agency in its requests of the legislature for policy is, has concluded that it would be best to shift the oversight and programmatic oversight functions and evaluation functions for CTE that we already do from in statute from the board as it's currently written to the secretary. And this is one of these things that kind of falls in the category of the agency used to be a department that reported to the state board of education. And in many cases, when that split happened over 10 years ago now, in many cases, it still kind of says state board where many of the functions are, are undertaken by the agency. And so that's one of the reasons why we're doing that. We also see a need to engage in rulemaking. And that is some, so that's something we are also asking for at this time in terms of moving the rulemaking authority over to the agency.
So I think, yes, there, there are some governance issues and APA report did not make a recommendation to move the rules. That was not in the APA report. But we agree that there's a need to be rulemaking on this. In fact, we've already discussed it in our rules committee and certainly was next up in our queue soon as we finish with EQS and twenty-two hundred and making sure that those three sets of rules were trued up and also trued up for Act one. So I'm just finding it really curious how it is that this popped up in a bill and nobody talked to us about it.
I, I would be, I would be happy to, I'm going to defer answering that question, Member Colby. The agency is, is a, is accountable to the, to the governor and does its policy development process through the governor. And so I think maybe it would be best for Secretary Boucher to speak to that in terms of what, what the process is for policy development.
So and we did discuss earlier that she is going to come in in a couple of weeks and we are going to have a conversation on exactly this point. So I think that's, that's a fair point. And I'm, I'm not sure. I, I mean, I think what you're hearing, and this is a fair representation. Board members, you know, starting with when Tammy and I testified before Senate Ed a couple of weeks ago, were surprised by, you know, the fact that we had not been looped in on any of this. Because that kind of feels like a fair thing that we might have been looped in on. So this is not directed at you, but I think, you know, board members are still kind of struggling to understand, you know, how this came to be and, you know, the reasons therefore and why the, the board was not involved in that request, but.
Absolutely understood and, and not to go into too much more detail and without going too much into detail of how the policy process works within the executive branch. Certainly any feedback in terms of how we can improve our process and, and keep, and keep you in the loop, we're happy to take on board. That said, it's not, you know, we don't often have sort of the clearance to talk about what our policy proposals are until they're finalized and they usually get finalized in January. So, you know, when we, when we present the bills or present our bill requests. So certainly we happy to, you know, think how about how we might, you know, give you an update on our, our proposals sooner in the session or something like that.
Yeah, and I think anytime there's a, a shift of duties or powers or responsibilities that implicate the board, that would be a good inflection point where it might be worth having a conversation. You know, just going forward because we're still trying to navigate and it's frustrating, I think, for everybody that we still have not determined roles and responsibilities between the agency and the board. And, you know, I think it's 12 years now. So, so again, you know, nothing to do with, you know, you. I think it's just things like this are maybe foreseeable because we have not figured this out. So I guess to me, this just kind of points to the importance of, you know, ma- making that determination with the agency and the legislature.
Un- understood, absolutely. And, and I will say, I mean, I know that I think that the board does as well as the agency would be interested in having that conversation. I've heard legislators say to me that they're also interested in having a conversation and yet the conversation hasn't materialized. So hopefully, maybe they'll have some bandwidth for it next year.
All right. Kim?
Yeah, I, I think maybe just echoing the frustration with the timing because we had a full-throated CTE presentation and Secretary Boucher was there, as were the folks from CTE at the AOE with us in our February meeting. So it sounds as though policy established in January should have been able to have been highlighted in our meeting in February. And I guess I will just also say that I, I certainly understand oversight because I think that sort of parallels EQS, there are reporting requirements that go to AOE. The rulemaking, while it may not be any of our favorite part of our work, it is a very public process. And the rulemaking for district quality standards, for instance, which became the AOE's, the, the, in addition to the three public, there were two or three, I think, public hearings on that, to which I think nobody attended. But there was one written public comment that we submitted, but that was not vetted in a public meeting. That was vetted in a separate meeting. The AOE as not a publicly elected board wouldn't have been necessary to have held that meeting in a, in a publicly warned meeting. So I just think the process is pretty different. So the only example we have to compare it to is the process that was used for district quality standards. And so I appreciate the importance of AOE having oversight responsibility and just call attention to a really different process regarding rulemaking that I think will be important for our further conversation on this topic.
No, I, I appreciate that, Member Gleason. Not being a member, I can't call a point of order. I will, however, note through you, Madam Chair, that our, our purpose and role of myself and, and my colleague Lindsay here is, is informational. And I unfortunately have a very hard stop, as does Lindsay coming up in five minutes. So I appreciate it. It sounds like maybe you have some, some policy questions that need, that I might just ask that we would be happy to try to answer any additional questions in our remaining time with you.
Sure. And understanding that, you know, you are not interim Secretary Boucher. And so like that part of the conversation, I think, you know, we will put in the parking lot for now and, and take it up at a later date. So Tom, I don't know if you have questions about any of the bills.
And if you do. The, the CTE bill, the first bullet point. And I'm wondering if that is a change that the districts now have the responsibility versus the, the tech centers? What, because I just know in my experience of running a tech center, we, we thought that that was already a requirement that. What, because I just know in my experience of running a tech center, we, we thought that that was already a requirement that um. We provided those pre-tech and exploratory programs um, and exposure to middle school students. So is that first bullet point just who's responsible now?
Um. Thank you. I appreciate the question. Um, and I would, I would, I might have to go back and refresh my memory just by looking at the requirement. So I know that CTE centers have, as a long thing, practice offered this. The difference here is exactly as you, as you, as you picked up on in the asking is, is that um. The, the intent of this, as well as having a comprehensive career development policy, which is that second bullet. The intent is to ensure that school districts are um, appropriately attending to it and making sure that their stu- all of their students in their district are. Getting exposure to their local CTE center. What we've observed is that this happens, CTE centers offer it, but it's uneven across the state. So we'd like to ensure that um, that all the students in Vermont are getting that access. I'm not sure if there's a shift in responsibilities in terms of what the responsibilities of the CTE centers are, and I would have to go back to check on that. But what I do know is the goal here. Is to ensure that school districts are um, those are more robust set of requirements in terms of. The CTE as a pathway being offered to students, and that's on the school district side.
Thank you.
So my question, and hopefully this will be quick. Paragraph five of S one sixty seven about counting fully virtual learning and um, ADMs. I'm just curious, because I remember a couple of years ago when we were coming out of the pandemic and during the pandemic, we had counted fully virtual days as days, you know, because we had to. And then I remember there was a conversation after we'd come out of the pandemic. That we were sort of stuck with the old rule where, you know, virtual days did not count. And I'm just wondering, because I know this is, you know, slightly different language, but does this. Language potentially change the ability to count, you know, a snow day um, as um. You know, a, a counted day, you know, on the school calendar. If, if, let me just finish that thought, you know, if schools were able to sort of deliver learning, you know, on a virtual platform. So that students could still, you know, be in school um, during a snow day, or if they were sick that they would be able to, you know, remote in and. So I'm just curious.
It, I, I'm, I'm glad you found that one because that's an interesting question that we, you know, that's, it's a. Anyway, that's an interesting question related to this. It's not actually, it's a different provision of law. In terms of the attendance day. Um, and so uh, this does not change that requirement.
Okay, so this is like limited to specific virtual learning programs?
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
Because that other program exists, there is a theoretical. Potentiality that you could have many, many virtual learning students, and that would then change sort of your attendance dynamics. But the thing that's really important to be clear about this is that virtual learning is not. An ideal option for all students. It turns out to be an ideal option for some. It's a small number. And we knew that pre-pandemic, but the pandemic has really reinforced that for us. So, so the attendance day requirements in terms of like the waiver of um. The waiver uh, authority and, and those kind of things, those are still unchanged. What we'd like to do is ensure that students are able to seamlessly and flexibly. If it turns out that um, that virtual learning is their best pathway, that they're able to follow that. We have language to defect to.
Great. So I know it is one o'clock. I don't know if you guys need to hop off or it looks like we have one more question.
We're happy to.
It's a very quick one, Ted, and thank you for your presentation. I'm just curious about the literacy focus on. Third grade below rather than, let's say, pre K twelve all. I'm saying this just to point out, I work currently at a school where we serve a lot of refugee and immigrant population that come to us. When they are already at ninth grade or eleventh, sometimes even straight to twelfth grade. And understanding overall how our state is currently struggling to remedy our challenges uh, with uh, literacy. I'm just really want to learn more about why the focus on third grade below rather than. All grade levels, because the assessment that is listed there to me is one of the key pieces. To help us improve our literacy um, education and really help support our learners in general. Not just for a few grade and forget about the rest. I'm curious if you can guide me of where I can find more information. I'd appreciate it, or if you can speak more about it.
Um, yeah, absolutely. And I, I'm, I'm also happy to connect with you um, offline. Uh, thank you for the question. So the important thing to note about S two oh four is that it's a hybrid bill between some of the requests that were made by the agency as well as um, some of the. Initiatives preferred by the members of the education committee. Um. I'm going to do my best to try to capture the backstory, but I'm by no means an expert and it was some, some interest of others, but you would be able to find some testimony on the Senate Education webpage, and I'd be happy to. Send a link your way um, on that. The, there's a lot of, of research about. When to screen students um, for uh, learning challenges, dyslexia, when to assess students um. Reading capabilities and that, and that, that pre K through twelve or for through uh, third grade, excuse me, seems to be that. Time that, that the evidence lands on. And so that's why that provision is there. That's not a provision that the AOE. Asked for, so I'm, I can't speak very specifically to what the, what the um, thinking was behind there. What I can say is that the. What, what you just offered as um, an experience wasn't something that Senate Education considered. So it may be something that as this moves into the House would be worthwhile um, speaking to them about in terms of what are the needs of new Americans in terms of literacy. Um, and how those challenges might differ and, and, or be different in the higher grades um, than they might be for um, for English uh, you know, native speakers of English or um. So I, I'm not quite sure, but I'll try and grab you some, I'll try and grab some um, links to where the development of that bill is and can connect with you offline about that. Um, and I, I do, I would, I would recommend that if there are folks who are interested in that, um, the new American experience, they might uh. How's that might be interesting.
I just want to elaborate one piece before uh, we miss that piece. And when I refer to immigrant or migrant. I do not just count the ML students. I count also, let's say, a US born. Who studies in America until fifth grade, for example, and then moves to. Jakarta somewhere, stay there for five years or seven, and then they come back to us. So it goes both ways. It could be a white native. American who could actually need uh, what I'm referring to. So I'm thinking for the overall population as well. It may be American and white, born in Vermont. And then for some instances or circumstances, your family takes you to. Some African country or to some European country. And then when you come back. Then there is a need to assess your literacy or screen you as well. So I'm referring to all those pieces. Just please, uh, I wanted to elaborate that as well.
I, I appreciate that, and that's really, really interesting um, and helpful context for me. I'm going to just look to Lindsay to confirm, since we've both been tracking this bill, but I'm, I, I would say, member G up, that I don't believe that this was, has been considered. So I would suggest that. If there's, there might be an interest in, in the committee hearing thing. And so if you know, folks are. And I, and I want to be respectful of the board's process in terms of how the board provides legislative advocacy, but um, it is certainly not something that they considered, I believe. Am I correct, Lindsay?
Yeah, not, not that I recall. Um, I don't think that was, that was anything that they considered. So kind of thinking about, you know, plotting this out, because I think Mohammed, you've done, you, you've really raised a really good point um, that. You know, highlight something that, you know, had not been thought about, but I think it really would add to the language of the bill, you know, as it's being debated. So I'm just wondering, um, and now I'm trying to remember if that's pending currently with House Ed or Senate Ed. Can someone remind me where it is?
Supposed to say where it was, and I don't think I did. It's in, it's in Senate Finance. Um, and it's going to be moving on um, to the House. So we expect that it'll be in the House next week. We're in this. Place where almost everything is going to be either, is either on the floor later this week or will be on the floor next week. And they'll be landing in the House. So I mean, it'll be in the House for action is my assumption by, by midweek next week.
Okay, um. So yeah, and, and I'll just be honest, you know, I'm, I'm thinking out loud here of how to best communicate um, that. Idea, um, you know, whether it's we reach out to House Ed or, you know, can we expect to get a call from House Ed, in which case I would. You know, say, hey Mohammed, perhaps this would be something that you would like to lead.
I'm happy to, to be a part of that piece, absolutely, because I just see it as a fact and it's happening all over the place. We are human beings. We can take your child uh, just for. A one year outside of the country to explore some other nature on life and comes back, maybe their English may decrease a little or something. So that's, that's one of the pieces. But yes, I am really happy to be a part of any conversations in that aspect. Because we care about all our learners.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, anything else for Ted and Lindsay before we let them go? All right. Um, thank you both. Um, really appreciate the presentation, um, the update. This was really helpful. Um, and I. Do hope that you guys will come back because um, it's, it's helpful for the board to um. Have this, you know, other than, you know, relying on you guys, um, you, you don't have. This opportunity. So um, really appreciate um, this level of support.
Thank you, and thanks for your time and for your questions, and hope you have a great rest of your meeting.
All right, thank you.
Take care. Thank you.
All right. Um, so this takes us to future meeting planning. So, couple of things. One is, you know, we had discussed having our April and May board meetings in person. I have asked Maureen and Suzanne to look into this and can confirm that we will be meeting in May. At Aleah School at Champlain Valley. Um, they are on spring break during our April meeting, so they asked if we could come in May, and I think that would be lovely. I've also asked for a presentation on community schools because they are one of the three. Recip- of the community schools grant that leaves it its third year. And actually, that was one of the things that I was really heartened to see is that um, I think it was H. Eight seventy four, the miscellaneous ed bill does provide funding um, to continue the community schools grants, which. I, there was an article that was in Vermont Digger, actually a couple of articles in Vermont Digger in the last week or so. Um, but that was one of the concerns. So. Aleah, I see that your hand is raised.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just want to clarify. Did you say my school in May?
Uh, yes.
I don't see this Champlain Valley.
Okay, wait a minute. I said that wrong. Um.
I was just gonna say, you're at North Country, really?
Yeah.
Okay. I just had, I was writing it down. It's like, wait a minute.
Yeah, no, I'm wrong. Obviously, you're right. It's North Country. Um, so thank you for, for clutching that. All of the acronyms kind of throw me off. Um, yes, it will be at North Country. Um, thank you. Um, Tom, was that your comment as well?
Yeah, it was.
Okay. Well, thank you guys for keeping me honest. Um. Just an FYI, April will also be in person. I still have about a couple of possibilities that I'm looking into, um, but I will. You know, update the board as soon as we can. Um, I do like how we've structured it in the past to, you know, block your calendars. Typically, you know, when we meet in person, I have started the meeting later to allow board members time, you know, who live far away to be able to get there. So my guess is that we'll probably be looking at roughly an eleven o'clock start time. We'll have a tour of the school, we'll have some lunch, and then plan to have an afternoon meeting starting at about one o'clock. So that's the plan, and I will fill in the details as I know them. We may not have EQS on the agenda for our April meeting because um, chances are we will have a special meeting in the interim and vote that out. And maybe we can have a celebratory luncheon in April. That would be nice, too. Twenty two hundred, um, we'll probably have an update on that and um. That's kind of all I know for sure at this point. I don't know if anyone else has anything to add. So, all right, well, to be continued on that point. If there's nothing further on future meeting planning, um, I will turn one last time to public to be heard.
I was slow on the mic, and I know I've suggested and promised this, not public to be heard. I don't see public right now, but um, I think. I will finally, now that we're taking a breath from EQS, be able to really go through statute, enabling statute for um. Our roles and responsibilities as a state board. And just even a bulleted, like framed conversation because. We're seeing it rise in places because it's not been dealt with more broadly, but it just would be a reminder for us. Of the full scope of our statutory um, requirements. And I know we are so focused on being reactionary in our, in our regulatory um, responsibilities. Just, we're doing what we're told to do next. And, and I think it would be an awesome opportunity to. A one pager that we could just look at together. And think about if it becomes sort of a body of retreat style work maybe in the summer or something that. Takes a little more time and attention when we're not um, flooded with other things. So I promise I'll do that. I've been talking about it and I know it, we haven't even had room on the agenda, but. I feel like I've got space to take a look at it, and I think it would be timely.
All right, thank you. Tammy?
Building on that related to, I'm wondering if um, as we, as we hopefully are winding down on two thousand and twenty two hundred. Now would be a good time to think about a board retreat. And uh, you know, we've talked about that. COVID made things a little challenging with figuring out how they do that, perhaps in person. But I think it might be useful and in that conversation, certainly we could. Kim, I think you bring up a good point. I think something else we've all talked about in the past is the fact that we do have rules, for example, that reference commissioners and. You know, it might be um, an opportunity to open up sort of a large body of rules just for some simple updates. But it, you know, thinking about sort of what our strategic plan and what our, what, where are we headed for the next, you know, twelve, eighteen months? Um, in the context of a retreat might be useful. It's be nice to see everybody.
So it, just to be clear, we're, we're thinking, you know, retreat is not connected to either April or May.
No, I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting that. That was just in terms of thinking. Around meetings and sort of as we come into the summer months and things along those lines. I'm just curious if. Might be a nice opportunity for us to revisit the conversation. I know we tried to do it, do it before and it was COVID. We had ripped in, like there were things that have sort of gotten in the way of that, but I think it'd be nice to do if we could do that.
All right, thank you. All right, I still do not see any members of the public who are wishing to be heard. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Kim, seconded by Tom. Any discussion?
Wait, I thought I saw Rich getting his hand in there, too.
Um, all those in favor of adjourning, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
All those opposed, please say nay and raise your hand. Any abstentions? All right, we stand in adjournment. Thank you, guys. Have a great afternoon and we'll talk soon.
Bye, everybody.